Yes.
And then.
Could be work for it.
Definitely.
There we go.
Yes.
Okay. Long to the. Select for a special meeting for July ninth, twenty twenty four. This meeting is being broadcast by the meme channel that counts YouTube channel and by Zoom. This will be recording for publication and later viewing. In accordance with the open meeting law, if anyone else in attendance wishes to record the meeting, they are required to notify the chair first so that the chair may from our other attendees. I have received notification from the meme observer. If there's any more in attendance that wishes to report the meeting, please let notify the chair this time so the meme service possible. All right. First order of business is public comment. We have one person here, Dan Goldberg, the public comment, Dan, if you want, come up, sit at the head. You. We do this reading. Three minutes.
I know, I know, and I'm gonna talk fast, I have four writers. Uh. I'm Dan Goldberg, I'm a Needham resident for fifty eight years. I'm a participant in the Council on Aging and have been on the board of the Council on Aging since two thousand and three, which included the building of the new. Center. The for the past four or five years, four or five years ago, the board came up with a number of suggestions that be needed to be done at the center. Uh, we gave them the most important was the swapping of the fitness room for the game. And there were a number of other things to do. Do the town responded by spending seventy five thousand dollars to hire an outside consultant. The outside consultants report basically confirmed everything that the bullet had recommended. But it's critical. The before I have four items, but the fitness center is clearly the most critical. If you have more than ten to twelve people there, it's overcrowded. I have pictures. We our fitness center has supervision with trained people. Because of that, some of the senior centers don't. Physicians recommend people come to our fitness center to do rehab. We recently had forty five men, the board did forty five minute session with the participants at the senior center. Forty of the minutes were consumed by people voicing concerned about the fitness. The other five minutes were basically about parking. Which brings me to the second issue. We knew there was a parking issue when we built it, so we're lucky this parking on Hillside Avenue. But supposedly the town is gonna be negotiating with the T about taking the first row on Hillside Avenue and negotiating. The Hillside Avenue that highest parking lot has never had more than twenty people in it since the pandemic. And the reason for that is anyone who lives on the other side of Highland Avenue parks at Percy. Percy used to be filled at eight o'clock, so the people had to park at the hikes. There has never been more, and I'm a county, unfortunately. There's never been more than a hundred and eighty cars at Percy on any day since the pandemic. It's gotta have three hundred and some. There's a hundred and forty something today, but this is vacation, so it's less. So that's my second thing. The third thing, which really costs no money is, and it's embarrassment, is the senior center does not accept credit cards. So if you go to the town website and go to community programs and you click on Park and Rec, I sign up for senior goal by giving my credit card. If you get aging services, nothing props. This was supposed to be taken care of. Every year we say it's happening, it's not happening. The fourth thing that I'm gonna mention is, we have, this is my low cost alternative. The report had, we're not using a really great debt that we have up there. But it would, there's no great solution. I think a low price solution would be to get one of those retractable awnings that would cover and make it less hot during the day. The other issue that was addressed by the consultants and people, and I think it's changed. And I don't know anything about it, is the kitchen. There was, the BI was supposed to be giving up that meals program and that was gonna go there, and I think they're not, but I can't comment on that, but those are the four issues that I think are most important, with the fitness center being by far the greatest.
Thank you.
Just quickly, your address for the record?
My address, one eighty eight Tudor Road.
Thank you.
Right across the street from Del.
Where are you?
Initially.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right. Is there anyone else for public calling on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the seven goals review.
Do we have extra pen? Shall I run down my car and take a grab? Josh just mentioned. Yep. I couldn't hurt to be out sitting to sign something.
So, um, the last time we met to discuss the goal, the board settled on the seven that are, um, healthy and socially thriving, economically vital, livable, accessible and connected, safe, responsibly governed and environmentally, that's the name you see, environmentally sustainable. Um, and we went through the bulleted items, um, took some out to man. I didn't get any, we didn't make any recommendations and I didn't get any feedback from anybody on any of those. Or whether you thought any of those needed to be updated. I did get feedback on long objectives, but not on the goals themselves. So I tried to make sure there was any um, sense of wanting to look at them again, wanting more time to think about them, or feeling like they do help us. Um, when particularly when we get budget requests, capital or operating. Um, you know, there may not be an objective in here on public art, there may be, I can remember, but it, but if we got a budget request, we would say, well, yeah, we we've agreed that we got it. So they're really valuable to us that way, so um, just wanted to see if there was anything else going on to do, if there's better ways.
When I look through the individual items, but there's a lot over. They could go multiple places, so. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
So I think we put them in one category or another, right? We didn't put them in multiples.
Like, some of them are, some of them are similar.
Yeah, yeah. It's chess on street, revitalization is in one, and then we play plan X.
Yeah, basically, it's more of a, is it, is it a transportation accessible, connected, or is it an economic development? Yeah, so that is kind of like tricky.
Right. That's okay.
Maybe we could have a practice of every other year, really kind of diving into those and seeing if other they, the goals, if they need to be seven or livable and healthy and socially thriving maybe are kind of the same, so maybe do that next year.
Okay.
So the next thing is to look at the prior objectives that were set, it's like, right. So it's getting back to that, that's what I'm saying, like.
We were putting a new seat at the last minute.
And uh, we have on the wall the categories that we think make sense. If you, I can read them to you, they're light. Um, one is, are we gonna remove or retire it? Two, are we gonna operationalize it, which means, you know, it's just part of the staff's life and work. Then we're back to eighteen, zero to eighteen, eighteen to thirty six, thirty six plus. Then, you know, some things that have been suggested are really just budgetary asks. Um, you know, for instance, the fitness is something that is, uh, there is, there's already a goal there to support that, but it's really a, um, a budget item which it is in the category. And then, um, refer. So sometimes we get things that we refer, most particularly to mobility and are the ones that we did last year. Um, and then Katie has all the cards, so that once we've done the first round of putting them up, they're all under zero to eighteen months, we need to take some back. And the interesting thing is, if they were zero to eighteen months before, I mean, we're starting again, today's day of the year, so.
Right.
Um. There isn't really a way to move all the eighteen to thirty six into zero to eighteen because the zero to eighteen.
Right.
But. So. Um. And then we have.
Are you gonna go through all of this and then put them on?
No, I would say we got, yeah. Sorry.
Nope.
They're damaged. Um. The other thing is, we've identified, Katie, do you remember how many got asterisks? There are five or six?
Yeah.
Five or six. So comparing, um, uh, I don't know, something small, implemented that are act with MBTA community housing.
Right.
Um, these are not the same. So we, we did an asterisk on the ones that we thought would be a real lift on the part of staff and like a big.
Okay.
Um. First one, um, community conversations on race. We do. There is a planning group.
Yeah.
Um, but we, this one is complicated because what we were trying to find a way to institutionalize it and who would, who would own it and where, and we just retained it. Um, I don't think it's sustainable for us staff wise.
Okay. This is community conversations through the choir.
Yeah.
Okay.
But this still, it's still yours, meaning it's still Katie's and um, that's not planning work now.
Uh, me, Dan, they go to camps.
Liz Lee, I mean, I'm a champion. I'll, uh, it's gonna be around. Um, Joanne. Joanne and Moly, that's my else.
Cause we didn't, we can, so they're not constituted as a committee because they're advisor to you, right?
I can be none.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's not happening, that is somewhere.
Have certain ways of institutionalizing this been discussed and projected?
No, I don't think, I think.
I don't. I would have said, I don't know that there was an intent to institutionalize the community conversations, but.
So that's. Okay, can you explain what you mean?
Well, in the sense of that you would continue to be the convener and organizer, I don't know that you worry proposed the first series, that there was an intent that that would be what they would continue. And, and one of the things that I've had was, we actually haven't had any consultation with Nwari, which had been the one institutional thing that we did commit to. And we haven't done that to say, you know, does this change go, you need to understand the implication of it. So we don't have that, but, um, you know, I, I don't know that that it has to, so maybe get the people to get it done.
Is, is this something that the human rights committee can take on? Is this appropriate in our charge?
Were the native of the first initiative or, I mean, it seems like a few groups around town and resilience network.
So instead of having a conversation about how to move it on, we just kept doing it, so would it make sense for the chairs to meet with maybe somebody from NDI, somebody from Nwari's, you know, somebody in the working group to say who's gonna take this, because we can't keep doing it.
Okay, I don't think it should be committed to keep doing, yeah.
Okay.
So is that refer?
There'd be, um. Yeah.
We could, human rights committee would be.
Yeah, there would be.
Um.
There is planning for some, another, something in the fall.
Yeah. Yeah, we can see that, right?
See that.
Do you wanna write any notes on it or are you?
I'm the notebook. Kyle tonight.
I'm just.
That's good.
I was really marveled, Katie, you're gonna be amazing with all those refers if you.
I thought you were a no match. Yeah, right.
Yeah. Okay. Um, Miles, can you, can you explain your update on this, um, maybe outreach for the diversifying the candidate pool?
So what we did this winter was identify certain groups in town that we would want to actively engage with beyond what we're currently engaging with the idea being based on our survey demographics, what are some areas that we are packing in, assuming that the other areas will continue advertising it because we are reaching the population we are. So in addition to continue reaching out, what are some other community groups, um? And that could be based on, you know, religion, ethnicity, et cetera, um, veteran status, other, otherwise, who we wanna reach out to. And then as we were just, um, coordinating the outreach for this year's mass recruitment, um, Heidi and I worked together and Heidi had sent out a few emails to some specific groups, um. Um, I know the interfaith clergy was one of them, um, to hit pretty much all of the participating faith communities with a real focus on just expanding the reach of current outreach, um, not reducing outreach to any specific groups or altering existing efforts, it's expanding on existing efforts. So we took that and we touched on other groups, C F N, um.
Needham Muslim neighbors. Guys night out.
Icon, icon.
And also working on that, and this year, um, despite feelings of the feedback, how um, we do have a survey now, though, that we're asking all community applicants to, um, complete as well as benchmarking on an annual basis, sitting committee members to fill out demographic data to understand how we're going over. So we have first year of data, hopefully in a recent pool that has the same questions year over year, kind of a longitudinal look at, you know, five years later, how did these efforts stand? And where can we then expand outreach at that? But we do have a survey, we do have a baseline, which we can continue to work towards, so it's gathering the data.
So I'm wondering if this one is operationalized, because, you know, we put these things into place and we're, it's our commitment and it's in the goal to, you know, diversify the pool. So I think we have maybe done this part of the eventual efforts.
Mm-hmm.
Are you seeing any, um, expansion of the pool to include people who aren't the same people?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we have been doing a lot of interviewing for the volunteer positions that are available, and I would say it's definitely expanded beyond the usual suspects.
A big thing, and we bring this up, I know as committee liaison, we bring this up to the committees, is active outreach by sitting members to their extended network is also very, very valuable. Um, for example, China, NCA C has been exceedingly qualified pool of candidates this summer, um, exceptionally so, and they are.
Not only, not only that, they have eight candidates for five spots, which is shocking.
And there's diversity in background, in age, in profession, in. There's musical people, we're getting there. Closer.
It's.
Thank you. All right. So we do have funding for an equity audit, which we are, um, we have continued to narrow and to narrow and to narrow. And our current plan is to get some expertise to help us identify what should be measured and some, um, help starting to measure it, because it started out really broad in terms of what are all of our programs and services that the government entity itself, not the community, but the departments are doing. So, um, we will be, by the end of the summer, have gone out and it's got a consultant to help us, just really get on a granular level. Um, with a lot of departments have a lot of interest in D I V, D E I B, but they just don't know where to start. And so like, what's the thing in, in the bigger department that, um, could be measured and would be a valid something to measure and then we start measuring.
So is this aimed at the experience of our staff or is this aimed at the experience of our community engaging with them?
It's both, yeah, but so, because some of our departments really focus only on staff and some of them are focused mostly on the public, so. Um, in order to, and some of it managers wanted, uh, look at staff as in terms of their work unit, and some wanna make sure that programs and services that they're operating, I always use this as an example, but it's a true one. If you wanna sign up for a rec program, you have to be sitting at a computer at a certain time. Some people's families don't have that opportunity. So we, how do we figure that out? And that's one of the things we can.
Would, since this is very broad, would it be easier to focus on one particular department to start?
That is one of the things we're looking at, because we're starting with the ones who are, that maybe have the easiest things to measure or the most interested in starting.
Cause I know in the library space, this is a big topic, so that might be a good.
Yes, some of our departments are sort of well out on the other road and some of them need more help, so we're working on that. And before we move on, can you just remind me what the B is, belonging?
Really, well, so I was gonna just note that it is really focused around staff and interactions with staff. It's not community wide, which is often the way people have heard these, but it is much narrower than that. Um, and then I actually wanted to go back to number two, I was gonna make a suggestion. It turns out that they have, H R C has a mailing list for all the orgs that they invited to the open house with all the different, um.
Ooh, cultures and need.
The multicultural.
So, so my suggestion is we might want to ask we or they could send out once on our behalf about openings to that list. And just at the share of their networks and so. Well, while we're on that one, I had a thought on that, which maybe you guys are already doing, but one group that I think or it's kind of two groups that maybe could be targeted if you aren't already, are new residents and families with younger children. I mean, those are harder groups to get because they may not know or they may be super busy, but I, I think some of those people may not feel as represented, so it's, it's not so much the traditional I approach, but I think they, they have their own perspectives that are important to hear from and.
We talked about, is it, are they still, do they exist? I don't know.
I, I couldn't find them in Needham.
Yeah, and I.
To be.
Can't talk. Are they gone?
I don't think they're gone.
Well, it's just, it's just that their group is like over multiple communities.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah, but I, I did look into that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then we did, we did, uh, ask a contact to get it into the schools.
Mm-hmm.
It's full.
Yes, yeah, that would be huge, actually, so.
Another, actually, now that we're on that, for, for young families, uh, oftentimes, meeting times are difficulty, yeah, so like with their all evenings, bedtime, that's really hard for people to commit. So maybe part of it is seeing, you know, if the meeting times can be adjusted.
No. Number four, board and committee orientation.
I forget it.
Oh, um, operational.
Yeah.
Miles and Katie are working on a curriculum and are planning for two sessions of an orientation.
It's fun.
And this was, uh, combined with number five, it was one of the recommendations of the Nwari, uh, of Nwari when we met last year was to include that the Nwari, Nwari's, um, raise equity statement in those conversations and make them. I think this one's operational.
Can I speak to number five just for a second? Um. So we had talked about checking in with Nwari annually, and we haven't done that this year, and maybe there's a point where that makes sense. I think there's two things that are sort of still out there from Nwari, one was the, the Marcus and Vivian work, and I just don't know for that. When? Um, the other thing that I think would be, uh, useful is the sub ID work that, that Miles talked about, I just, I think it would be of interest to discuss where were we successful, where were we not last year getting results and how, is there something we need to do to improve response from that? I just don't know. So.
Okay.
I did hear from some people who told me no way now how were they responding, and then I had to discuss with them about why we asked, and they were like, oh, I didn't understand that was why you needed that, I could have responded. So. It wasn't really that, but, but it says maybe there's something more.
More. I will, um, follow up with Vivian on the, to get a report on the focus groups.
Okay.
Still think they're operational. Unless somebody disagrees.
So these one, four, five of them are.
Four, five of them are. They were set separately, and then when the board updated it, we agreed that they were really the same thing. Um, six is done, just take a moment to.
Savor that.
Savor that.
Good one.
Comes off. Um. Okay, so now that we have identified these network groups, we were trying to figure out how to find a way to invite them to the select board to talk about their work. So what would that look like? What would you like, what would you like to see?
I can envision that the group, the big group come with the board and just sort of introduce themselves, say what they do, what they which isn't, you know, group with something they um, advocate for, and some of the, their issues. Just, you know, how they's, their perspective. Um, I don't see it lasting more than five minutes, ten minutes. That's the questions, and then that's, that's kind of it, just to, so I wanted to get them, wants to introduce them to us, and then also that they see how the condom works, but, and so then the rest of the time, all those watching can see that. So it's just to raise awareness.
How many of these you want to do? You have twenty four meetings a year, twenty two meetings a year.
No, well, you're not gonna get all of them, I mean, you're right, it's gonna be like four year. Maybe one every season.
I'm worried that there are a lot of groups, you'd be excluding people.
Well, right, we can't do everyone, but we can get to everyone over the years, so it's.
Identify, that, that, that's been our concern is that we.
Well, that is, they're self-forming in a weird way, self-declare, right? So it's not like they.
How do we invite them to invite themselves?
I mean, I assume that's.
Well, we invite that, it's an invitation to icon. Or.
Well, what if a group doesn't receive an invitation and wants to participate?
Then, yeah, you are. That's then it becomes too easy, let us know, please.
Well, we can put out a call through public meetings, right?
Being the multicultural net, what you know, the list.
Yeah, I guess now that you wanna send out a call if you're only gonna do for a year. But, well, except that it would be good to have that information or like this aside, it would be great to have that information, period. There are self-identifying groups, we wanna include them in lots of things. This is one thing, but we would want to include them in our call for volunteers and any other sort town-sponsored business.
So, so what I would have continued to say is, I think it's important to tell them why you're looking for that information and what it would mean for them to identify.
Yep.
Do we need to restrict to four times a year? If this is only five or ten minutes? I mean, if there are a lot of groups, is there an argument? You know, I don't, like, even every time, if it's five minutes, it doesn't. Maybe I'm. But I, I mean, see, that is a huge.
I think we could do. More. When you say identity groups, what do you actually? Um. I mean, I, I understand icon, C F N, Muslim families in Needham, but then are we talking about weight communities? Are we talking about political communities?
Right.
No, 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 right, I, I would say I keep it to, uh, self-identified by community groups that are citizens, but not necessarily on ideological party.
Cultural.
Cultural, ethnicity. So. Yeah, it's so very.
Cultural, not political, not religious. There's culture. What, that's Canada's.
I guess we could do religions, which is.
Yeah, I mean, there is a sense in which religion.
Mary, I didn't touch that.
I disagree, Needham, are they cultural, are they political, or are they ethnic?
Uh, they are. Yeah. Awesome.
Lots. Another way to do it might be around event, so if, if a identity-based group culturally based is formed enough to have events, then maybe when those events happen, happen to come in, like the event that might be sealed, that Heidi went to, multicultural, like the ittar that might, that might be a start to say, if somebody's identified enough to have an event, then we invite them to come in and talk about it.
Oh, okay, noted, and look.
Can you invite us? We'd like to come, especially if there's. They do invite, that's, that's how we know.
Yeah, so actually, maybe, I think it's kind of similar, so we, we, you know, do some outreach to people, say, we want to get to know you better, but maybe the chair and vice chair. Uh, but it's not. Uh, but it's not for a meaningful meeting because. If we're inviting only certain people, that, I think that's very awkward. Because we'd be excluding other people. So we basically have an open invitation, an open self-invitation to meet with groups. Um, outside of.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that doesn't already exist kind of, but we could certainly state it. And I do think it'd be nice to have. Well, I suppose if they were to invite us, then we can talk about potentially coming to. Introducing themselves to what community.
I'm not as concerned about. Like, not getting, like. You do what you can. I don't want, you know, perfection to be, yeah, anything good, just trying to do something. Um, we'll probably make new steps, but it won't be.
But we could also ask HRC to help us with this, just to like reach out. Right, because they have the list, but we were talking about that.
We could draft up a statement of why we want to do it and the groups that we know about. And ask other people, if there are other groups who might want to be invited, and then just. Yeah, they could ask them to contact Miles if they want to come and.
So maybe an opt-in is better, and then we're not inviting specifically anyone and therefore not inviting other people. Like, get the word out very broadly and have an opt-in, if this basically is what Kate was just posing.
We could also, we could also say, I, I want to make sure that. We, we've always had a policy that if we're asked, someone will ever vote, right? And sometimes we miss things, and I want, I mean, I think Josh's point is like, we want to come to your events, let us know.
Yeah, actually, just making sure that they know to submit. Like a invitation, yeah, because lots of times we don't get, you know, like, we, we didn't get an invite, an actual invitation to the. The Nora later this year. We, we knew about it. Right, well. The two years that I've gone, we didn't. And so. So we knew about it, so we went, but we didn't get an invitation, so we could have missed it. That's the point. It's like, if you have. If you have something that you'd like us to come to and. Know you about it, but like, if you'd like us to come, please invite us.
Last year, we did a proclamation, this very awareness. But yet there is no respect for Needham, it's just brought by. Citizens, just there isn't a big group here. There is, but not all, there's no group for this.
So there's a faithful group that. Okay, yeah, okay, all right. Uh, I would say that remains on the goals because I think that's something that we have to think about and do. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, eight's done, although I would say, um, I think that. The chairs, uh, my staff should talk, you know, next winter about how we can even make it. Get more people there, if there's anything that you think could make it more interesting, somebody has to adjust about, read about. What else could happen? We have somebody saying.
The church bell, New York Church Bell, the Paul Vier Bell Conference.
Oh, that's nice.
You know, a small stop of that, but next year at the chair, you remsee it next year, soon, yes, well.
Did we invite the group that we're in the focus scripts with? Like, people attended the focus scripts with Marcus and Vivian?
We asked, we asked Marcus to set, set it out widely. I will make, and I don't have, I. Intentionally don't have that list, but I will think about how to do that. Marcus to work. Okay, but operationalize, I think, but I, it was a great success, and I'm really glad we got something done.
Yeah.
We tried big and sometimes small.
Yeah, after some guy came up to us and said, I had some great ideas for next year. It's like, okay, but that's, you know, it will grow on its.
Okay, so we have the um, the senior corps, and we're working to, we've adopted the Valor Act, which is a similar program for veterans, but we haven't. Um, implemented it yet. We're getting close. Yeah, so we think this is probably an operationalized because we're gonna get it rolled out by. By the end of the calendar year?
Yeah, calendar year.
Can you sketch up a Valor Act?
Yeah, must by better.
Valor Act, Valor Act would basically allow um. Certain veterans in town to, similar to the senior corps, work off property tax through what is effectively community service in town.
Okay.
And it went to town meeting to be adopted, some number of years. Christopher did it, so.
Yeah.
That'd be getting on five, at least, so, yeah, so we're gonna do that. Operationalize?
Yeah.
And here's again the focus groups, but I'll, I'll contact Vivian and. Who are they following off? Okay, I got more spread. Something we learned last year. So other than following up to get the feedback, is there? I think this one's done.
Um, number ten, Ron, um. You know, I. Congratulations, right? But there's something that like. I don't want this just to go away, it's like, one done, did it, and move on, seems like.
Well, so. You're saying it's done because there's no existing goals that are in there, right? But we're just about ready to get our, our cultural uh strategic plan, which definitely. Will fit into this category. I mean, we haven't seen it yet, right? Or is that somewhere else?
We're still talking at ten.
Oh, ten, okay, I thought you were making a point about the whole category, saying it's done, I'm like.
You know, the, we did include, we did include in your packet. The um. The Nwari race equity statement for Needham, and we were really kind of rejoicing at how much had been done. So nobody's saying we're not gonna keep looking at those things, but I don't think this is an objective for twenty-five.
I agree with that. I think it's time for a reset there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that. So operations, what is it?
I think done, but.
It's done, but it's not done.
It's done, but.
We don't know what the, we don't know what the outcomes were, right? We don't know anything about what happened at those, to know if there's follow-on actions.
So we'll have more objectives later that involve, if there are things that are suggested in the. Report that we could add to.
So there's a report that's not complete, that's on this.
So we had a outside consultant. I think she did this for me. Um, did it, so, you know, I don't know how, like, it's not gonna be like this major report, but she's said she would get us her impressions.
Some findings.
Yes.
Okay.
So then I would say when we, maybe an idea would be um in this category is to say when we update. Over the goals mid, in the middle of the year, that this is something, we don't want all of the race equity goals gone out of here.
Yeah.
Uh, objectives, I mean, um, so we can put that back.
Well, maybe there's things that we want to act on, that are, you know, that, you know. So onto goal two, when, when we get that key, I mean, I'm thinking back to this uh annual checking with Nwari. I think that's a question to, to ask that team as well. If they have an recommendation, one more, based on what you've done.
And I think it would probably be good to do that after we do the board and committee orientation, so that we've done the piece that we said we were gonna do.
And before we go on to goal two. The zone I moved to. And uh, we're gonna. Right, and this is six forty-five. That's a meeting here.
Somebody will have to move next door.
Looking at this content, I just have a question. My recollection was Bruce and Holly Johnston, did he lose his vote? Usually we give someone the vote of one.
Usually Bruce Johnston.
Yeah, I, I don't, we usually get it exactly how. Um, how good gives it to us, well, I think it's. How could they do that? Yes, um, there will be at the end, I do need to nail down the time to meet in July, so.
Okay. Right, we have to plan a John.
It's, it's just a short one, the, the, the major reason is we need to do some things relating to the election, and they have to be done. And they made them, GOLs, and then they have.
Okay.
And so on, the only one we have currently on economically vital is the Justice Street redevelopment. And that was mentioned in the planning board's notes to us, um, but they have not. Um, finalized their goals for FY twenty-five. So this is something, I mean. Mostly they'll be doing it, so perhaps when they do theirs, we can regroup and. Uh, at the end of the calendar year and have objectives to support what they're doing. We've got large house later in the list. Um, and they're doing something with parking, so I don't know that they're gonna take up Justice Street.
Seems very related to the MBTA community, yeah, it seems like worth postponing until we understand what that then, that that street is. Very, it's very implicated.
East and west.
Neighborhood there, yeah.
So I'm also wondering if there's something, um, you know, costing related, and I don't. Know if the Council of Economic Advisers has any advice there, I mean, I think we're hearing. Rumbles about some challenges in space and what's going on with vacancies over there, I just don't. Not totally intended for the current situation, but that would be another just question I might ask as I think about this area.
So I would keep Justice Street on thirty-six months.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, not as an objective, but perhaps as a future to think about whether we need to add an objective on Needham process. So we can talk to JP, and we can talk to the chamber, and we can talk to. The DA.
Isn't Island Dad sort of ahead of Justice Street in terms? Then we're doing great plan and thinking.
So Island Dad is truly uh accessible and connected project, it's a roadway project.
Okay.
Um, Justice Street was really about like. You know, are we gonna redevelop what's there, you know, and the hospital has a lot of very grand plans that they're not. Ready to do yet, so I would, I would guess that this will move up quickly when they say, hey, we're gonna.
Okay.
And I also think all along that. The, the MBTA communities will have some impacts about whether or not. When we want plan for that.
But in, in terms of the tip.
Yeah.
Okay, here we have our first asterisk. Heavy lift.
It means what?
Oh, heavy lift by the staff and the board. So we're trying not to compare, you know.
Yeah.
One thing to another. Um, I say this is a zero to eighteen month.
Yeah.
Squarly.
Yeah, for sure.
Not really much to talk about until August one, or the thirty, August, August thirty-one.
Yeah.
Or whatever that, sometime soon.
The planning boards go start the discussion on the fifteenth, which is a date change from that meeting. Um, and then we're.
That's them reviewing our plan to see if it's compliant, when you say hearing back from the state.
Yes, so exactly. The unit is reviewing it, hence and the Attorney General's, so it's also reviewing it. Uh, they made that offer to communities to re-visit as well, so it's.
They were reviewing both clients?
Okay, so we're in a little bit of a. Small breathing? Although, although the planning work has already been working on this in some degree, I mean, the, the West Street Plan, this is. Gone in the planning board, so the work just isn't.
And they're deep diving into what the actual zoning is, right? That's what they're doing at their meeting.
Yeah.
Um, identify funding for school master plan projects, so, thank you, Dave. I mean, this is. Completely at the discretion of the MSBA, there's a meeting coming up. With um, the schools on, on the question of the enrollment and how big a school they need, so this is moving forward. Um, the, the, the hope is an invitation to participate. To the next step in October, but it could be December, like, I think October is.
October is, but they're focusing.
They're focusing on October. So we'll know more.
Okay.
I mean, this was really a. How are we gonna get this off the ground? I don't know that it nee- needs to remain a select board objective since it's.
And when you say identify funding, it really is just for this first step.
It was for the feasibility.
Can we keep something and just go for a little bit? Um, understands the costs, so, but the estimates now are three hundred million dollars. I don't understand all the goes and fro's. I think it would be good for us to, you know, talk of building design and construction to really understand that.
Well, isn't that part of what they're doing with the feasibility? It's like laying all that out.
We are, we're not asking the building.
Right.
Well, we're.
We're getting there. I mean, I think that's what we're waiting for, is an explanation of all costs, right?
So, if they, I mean.
No, I was just gonna say, they, they're focusing on the parameters of what the MSBA would be. Interested in partnering with, once we have that, we get a census scope, because it could be north of three, it would be south of three.
Cause they have to look at everything, including reno or rebuild.
Right.
So I don't think there's any way to understand the cost yet, until they get to the next phase.
Yeah, the next phase, that definitely has to be incorporated. Dead and, uh, dead and bad tax and that. Um, I think it'll be during the capital budget process, so in uh, winter time.
I, I hope that we can be closely involved in that, because I think that's a big. And it's a big project, and I think people are really interested in understanding why it costs so much.
Yeah, so. I'm happy to prep something, it's. Typically, we have been included, but. We could. Yes, we could do a, you know, an actual request to have.
Maybe just a joint meeting between the select boards, school committees, and the building design and construction team there as well.
To say, um, monitor, we monitoring. Well, I'll monitor the next phase, that's truly what is being discussed, because right now. Uh, we were securing funding to begin the process, and we've secured the funding and the process of beginning.
So wouldn't they typically come to the select board and make a work on all of this?
Well. Yes, um. I don't, I don't think it's a problem that the board has a public statement that they want to work with the school committee and the finance committee. And the PBC to understand, you know, the project moving forward.
Yeah, the scale and scope, yeah, I'm that, yeah, we want to understand the scale and scope. So again, back to the parameters, because we need to know. What's the parameters that the MSBA is willing to partner with the town? Then that's when those conversations will happen.
It can't happen yet, but it could be an objective if you want to.
Right, well, game out this way.
I was gonna say, I don't think. We want to ask for a joint meeting, right? It is the school committee's responsibility. But I think that if you want to ask after the school committees had their briefing on the feasibility, if maybe the chair, the vice chair, or the PBC reps. Would come and brief the select board, I mean, I think there's some other ways that still fit within the governance structure.
This is a weird part of the. That's confused me. I, I thought all buildings, including school buildings, were under the jurisdiction of this, it's got select board.
No.
Maintenance comes under the town manager, but control of school buildings is the school committee.
For operations, but can use building buildings, I mean, that, I thought that's why select board. Um, was always the proponents of articles for construction projects.
So the select board is the proponent. So the select board is the proponent because the capital budget, the capital plan is in our jurisdiction. The entire capital, we propose. So all capital, the requests for capital go into town.
So.
But jurisdiction over the buildings themselves is the first.
No, no, but the the construction is 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 part of the capital.
Of course, yes, yes.
Yeah, but they that they still are, the project is.
Yes, they 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 need to convince us that the project should be in the. And in the capital budget.
Well, I'm convinced it should be there, but but the past component is something that I think we need to.
Hence back to the winter.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, when we get into the true capital process.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't, I just feel like this is. Already, already part of the natural order of events, that that they get this the information first, because they're the project managers. And then they bring it to us, and they explain it all, and we ask questions, and then we reconcile. I mean, that's, seems like the way everything kind of goes, so I'm just, did you want something? More than that, or are you just making sure that it happens?
I definitely wanna make sure it happens, I guess this is the the first time going through the process from this perspective.
Yeah.
Uh so, you know, because it's a particularly large project, I think you should make sure that.
It's also the select board puts it on the back, so. Uh I'm trying to think of the last big project, but there were, there were lots of meetings with. Um school committee and the finance committee, I mean, a lot of chairs meetings on every grower, for instance, but on Sunita Williams. We'll make sure that. So then we're operationalizing it? That means we're making sure that it happens.
Yeah.
All right. I do think, you know, when, remember the middle school task force last time? That, you know. Yeah, so. There were, um then there was a high school task force, like about what you put the class, and so on, those these things do tend to.
Like a T chalk style situation for the.
We have, no, 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 it's through, it's through P V C, so you don't need a T chalk. Like the school committee created this high school working group to decide whether we should add those classrooms, and there were people small.
Good people.
All the, yeah, and then, you know, sort of blank information.
That's sort of what I meant, not looking at.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a, working for. From all relevant.
Yeah.
Understood.
I I think that the R T S service delivery model is um was on here to support a budget request. We're still working to get this survey done, but. Um well, I think it's operationalized, and we'll be bringing recommendations after that that might become future objectives, but we don't know what those.
Is there anything that's gonna be time critical for the fall cycle from them? I mean, like.
Cost wise?
Cost wise, because I think part of it, right, wasn't this also supporting some other potential changes that they were.
We desire the R T S.
Reason, right.
Which wouldn't be this.
No, it'd be.
Okay, so the fact that it's not happening till fall, winter is fine.
Yeah, that's fine, then we just, we couldn't get anyone to do the study, so.
Right.
We had to break it into parts, and they're working on a survey, we think they're gonna use Walco again, try to gauge public.
And so this gets retired or removed?
It gets, it's got operationalized, because we'll, everything, if we find out, we'll bring back to you and make a presentation. Okay, fifteen is another one.
Thank you.
So. We had some meetings with um. The property matters representatives, uh. But I really do think, I think there's two things that I would ask the board to consider, one is. Engaging the residents in some early meaningful way before we do anything else. Um probably asking a couple select board members to volunteer to come over there to neighborhood meeting, a couple.
Uh, sure.
Um early, and then, one of the things that we'd like to talk about is. We, we, because we didn't wanna send the survey that we've been working on out of a whole shot to bread. Once I looked at it, I thought this. So, surveys. Anything we're contemplating in this survey? I think, we think, is more complicated than we are able to. Manage, uh so we were wondering if there was a, a mechanism to have. A warrant article in the fall that would help us manage this process and think through what like. Not just the tenant relocation, but also potential redevelopment options for the site, I don't know if those are the same kind of consultants. Have it formalized that for you yet, but um one of the items that was out there as. An option is to rebuild some housing on Great Plain and move. The ball field to the back, and then you'd have place to move people if that would even work, but these are not. Our expertise. Um and and we have to think about a transition plan, because we do own. That part of the responsibility, so if we were to, for instance, I'm not recommending this, but if you were to lease. The area on the ball field. To a developer who could then help with the relocation, this might be a way for us to get out of that business. We did meet with the chairs and parker, and they were willing to talk about any very, very receptive. Um have a strong opinion, but willing to talk about any of this.
Yes.
Reminding when the lease, the currently seven. Would this be the place for reconstituted work for housing trust fund to take a role, like to manage? Process of.
I would say they would have, I would definitely want them involved, but I don't think we have the housing expertise. Or the development expertise, so. You know, sort of trading land lease for development, and then one of the things we talked about as a pipe dream was that it would have. Some sort of teen center on the basement, like we'd everything's thrown in the mix when you're at the beginning. But we also have then this issue of the tenant locations.
I think would definitely benefit by some outside expertise.
Yeah.
And I think, um hopefully that outside expertise might be able to help you get as far as. Thinking about the how to's and thinking about. You know, how how do we figure out how to work with the development, or if that's what we end up wanting to. To build the kind of housing that we want, to be. You know, some component that's be like portable to cover people who are. And how do we get more workforce housing in there, I mean, I think. All of those questions are valid, because that is one parcel that we actually control. And so if we can figure out how to create an economically viable package.
Yes.
Um, and yet we know there are people in Boston who seem to be building sixty percent workforce housing. How do we get some of that guarantee? What would it take?
And to be fair, we haven't decided that it's going to be housing that we're gonna do there, but I don't know that you can tell people. Housing or no housing unless you have studied what might actually work.
Right.
Right, and if it were to be, we control it and we have the best chance of getting what we really want there. So would the idea be to, in terms of the order of how we do it, is the idea first to get a consultant to. Put out there several options and then survey people on the options, or is the idea to survey people? About, you know, kind of, here's a bunch of things, and then use that data to direct the consult.
I think we need to direct the consultants on that.
Yes, I guess my, my concern is.
What, well, which did you have in mind?
I guess it struck me how close twenty twenty seven is.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna miss October, I think that's a mistake, so.
Yeah.
Um I guess the question is. Is the board, like, how are we gonna, uh uh is the community gonna tell us that we want housing, or are we, or is the board gonna say we want housing, or how do we?
I think there are three separate issues, like. The tenants, yeah, you know, do, do we take over leases, do we do something else? I mean, that's one question, the second is the building, do we keep the building and repurpose it, do we? Get rid of the building?
Buildings coming down.
Bones coming down.
But yes, yes.
I mean. And then the land, what do we do with those? I mean, those are all very different types of streams, and I, I don't know, can you get one consultant to answer all those, I mean.
I think you might also to say, they could say, here are your options, so don't offer. The neighborhood options that you can't. Provide for, like, they might give you some finest guy, things, which is like, you can't do.
So perhaps a feasibility study, a more broad feasibility study on Greensfield in general, is like what the reasonable options are, and then.
Yeah, so the the select board, I think, has the responsibility to. Make some priorities, like if we decide we don't wanna sell this piece of property, or if we decide we do wanna prioritize housing. That, that, just those decisions should direct some of the activity, it's true that there may be many, many more options. I think part of. What we're supposed to be here for is to make some of those decisions.
Maybe we could add that to an agenda, I don't, not coming in, but so so we can.
Hmm, of course, it might also be possible to combine housing, some, as, you know. Team center or whatever, it it can, sure, be more than, yeah, definitely.
And the, you know, the the very basic inquiry that I've done is that if the board. And the commission, the parker commission is our partner, they align side, we align the other. You know, if i- if you, the 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 land value in these kinds of development is the huge cost, so if there's a land cost, because. Orders willing to do that, so, so dog, um that there are lots of options. So, okay, well, what, what? The two things that we could do from this objective is, one, convene a meeting with the residents this summer, and two, we'll draft a scope. Draft scope for you for your August meeting to look at, if if that makes sense for feasibility, then we can. Try to work on getting it funded.
For those of us who haven't actually been in the building, we also arrange a little tour.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many residents are living there now?
There are twenty seven units, I mean, nine units, they're not all single office.
Twenty seven units.
Twenty seven units. There's more people than units.
That's a substantial number of people.
And the rents are.
Yeah.
It's a little bit the opposite of astronomical ones.
Right.
They're like nine hundred to eleven.
Yeah, it's pretty great.
The spiral staircases, I mean.
The units are weird, yeah, I mean, just the ones you'd conceive when you're walking by.
Right. Oh, yeah.
All kinds of crazy features.
Okay. We're working on the design, or what are we working on? We uh will have ideas for Hillside and Mills. Um. And the potential of off leash. At the Rosemary Trail, these were three recommended by the A R A working group. We went and looked at Zero Harrison, um the team felt it wasn't workable, so. It's too close to the road, it just needs so much clearing. Yeah, for pedestrians.
So it was my understanding that the first item to work on on this was to get, was to see whether the select board would be. Okay with this policy, like then we would have to change the policy first, and then we could work on. What the implementation would be, because it was, because some of those spaces are owned by other committees in town, so. I mean, this is a change to our on leash all the time policy, don't we have to deal with that first?
Um.
Or are you just saying, here, we're gonna present some options in which this.
What I understood the goal was is that. You wanted us to explore the option of having off leash.
Right.
So the only places we've identified that we would recommend. Are those three, but we needed to tell you whether it's even workable there, so we have an engineer looking at. What it might cost to. We, at least I think Mills and and Hillside need fences of some kind. So it's just my initial, and I think the survey for that, I think some of those, um if you were doing an off leash, um. With no, with, you know, more trail wise, if the Rosemary would be something, we could, we saw some of these.
So I'm thinking, having just come back from Toronto, it was amazing to me. Downtown, all these, you might call them pocket parks, but they were all parks that sort of, you know. You know, size of things that we have all over town. But there was a portion of like each of them that was set aside, it was fast, was wood chipped. It was used in like all over town. Madera has one just like this, it's quite small, but it is heavily used. Heavily used. And uh that that was something that during the course of the group, I had suggested, because I really think that. What what we heard. Um is that proximity is the most important factor for use, and. Uh would the idea was roundly um dismissed by pretty much everyone involved, which. You know, it's unfortunate, but as I'm not a dog owner, I guess they just don't share the, the rationale, but I agree with you, I think. Having smaller parks more equitably distributed across town, even if you start with. Two pilots and then move on would be much more useful, but.
Well, I think these are the, right, I mean, these are the places that could be.
Yeah, they could be, but I do think there'd be questions.
If you have, if you have one over at Mills, where, you know, your kid's playing baseball, or you're.
You're playing pickleball.
Pickleball or whatever, um so I think that people say, well, look more of these, and then, you know, I think it'll grow. But I don't think the park at Nike is a. It's not like something you can scale, people don't picture that anyways.
Right. Right, and I think it's entirely different in nature, you have to drive there, the the whole idea would been. It was smaller, it's that you would, you can put some in neighborhoods, people from those neighborhoods could use them rather than. People from all neighborhoods convening elsewhere.
Yeah.
Theory. It seems like it depends on what you want it for, I think some of the people want like a huge space where their dogs can just run like on a trail. You know, and then maybe other people want what you guys are describing, just small and close by and. But I've definitely heard the desire from some people to have a larger. Space.
Yeah.
Right, like a nature.
Right, that's Rosemary.
And as you point out, these are not in our jurisdiction, so we don't even have. Hillside will eventually own.
For the large, you know, expanse, what about?
We don't have that.
So, what's the state revenue?
Not at all.
That there are dogs off leash there all the time, no. It's a leash area.
Um I I say this stays on the zero to eighteen.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah. For some decision making.
Okay, well, kids use it as their track, and then there's poop everywhere.
The kids.
Or the dogs.
Yeah, the, you know, the present country team.
I mean, I, on seventeen.
Yeah.
Getting the housing authority movie, I think we've done this, I think it's operationalized now, and we have T chalk to monitor it, and. It's a, it's in their board, I think the board. Has supported it and. We got the zoning and we got the money.
Yeah, well, we got good timing, yeah, um. We will have a hand in. Input or feedback about design as a project of school, right?
Planning board will do that.
Yeah.
You're welcome to.
To go.
I figured to be a presentation.
Oh, yes.
We can express.
And it's, I mean, they could get funding this fall, but it's not certain.
Okay.
It it appears it may be a more than one year process. Yeah, I think that it's possible, actually, that all the state money for this fall is already committed.
Well, so.
Yeah, but I mean, it was already committed, what what's coming up this fall, they already.
Okay.
Yeah. So I would say it's not a huge chance that it's gonna get funded.
That's, I would say, operationalized. Oh, good, we didn't do pool cards, I forgot. Thank you.
Yep.
Um Housing Trust, so um I would recommend that we move this one to eight, zero to eighteen, because I think we're not ready.
Yeah.
And the league is coming out with their report, so.
Yeah, we want to do this.
Uh we have invited, or will be inviting the league to a chairs meeting to start to have them tell us what's on, and then they'll come to a select board meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe a, maybe a joint meeting. Before the Housing Trust. Before the Housing Trust. Um, the retail Nike project, I just can't see this one making it to the top of your list with these goals. I keep it at thirty six.
What is the, what is the project?
What do we want to do with the three acres that we have there that we took the house down on? What and we, what do we want to do with the barn and should be the long term plan for Nike? Should they be connected and should we swap the things that are on them?
We originally held a foster.
We had several, we had a study on this in terms of, you know, what could go at Nike and there was lots of conversation about that.
And is all of this land buildable?
The three acres. Including the barn is all buildable, but there's a they call that one multi-party or uh, the Concom has a role in anything we do there. This is surrounded by Concom and we, the select board by MOU has agreed to consult with them.
Well, buildable is a relative term. It's not on sewers. Building something there and putting it on sewer would be quite expensive, so. It just takes thought.
Nike is also buildable and we did, we do have a study that shows that, you know, it could be structures built there. And then there could be a road that links them. That was a priority of the board at one time.
Yeah, I was sort of more thinking about if it's not buildable than, uh, cause we're looking for land to offset Rosemary, right?
Can't do this.
But I think it stayed there. If something, if something came up, we'd say, we, this should stay here because this is something we have to do. And that barn, we, it's in our maintenance plan, so. Eventually.
Just, what's wrong with the content? Or is there anything?
The barn is it's not gonna last. Um, so we have to decide, it is, the theater people use it and now they do, um they have the first floor under agreement as well to do set building. So we do have eyes on it. It's not, I mean, having an empty building isn't a long-term strategy. And then it it was a strong priority of a different board that something should be done.
I don't even know that I would have characterized it as a strong priority.
Strong priority of members of a different.
Of a member of a different board, yes, but.
Sometimes these things just.
I'm okay with it the way it is.
Unless there's something that we need to find a home for.
Do you want to take it off?
Well, so I do, the piece that's important is, at some point, a decision's going to have to be made about the barn. The barn is operational, maybe we call the barn operationalized, but at some point, a decision will have to be made about the barn. And I sort of think until we, somebody comes back and says they want to put something there, do something. This is not I, on my part.
Well, our building maintenance has the barn on their plan, so I mean, that's, that's operational.
I think there's anything driving something there now.
Okay, twenty's done. Have in the back, take with the miles. And.
Just so you know, that's how I'm thinking the ones that are completed off the big yay.
We're working really hard on twenty one.
I hope somebody else takes advantage of all the work that was done for twenty.
I know.
Bring something else forward.
Yes, well, the committee will meet and try to drum up more business.
It's approved by the attorney general, the committee will report.
Is there, is there, um, like, how old? Are these, or does it matter?
Generally, the homes the 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 master commission looks highly on the, already being on register, the mass historical register, but that wouldn't necessarily stop anything of a certain age. It's historical significance.
And we have very few that are on the register.
In just looking it up, there's, there's more than I thought would be on the mass historical register. The national register, less so, but three Rosemarys.
Those are good, seventy, eighty properties.
They were, that's on the ma, the Needham Register.
No, uh, Mass.
There's over a hundred on the Needham. That was, was terrible.
But but Carol, when Carol did it, right, I don't think it necessarily has owners' permission. Inventory game, yeah. It's my recollection. So now there's been more of a focus from the historical permission and trying to get owners' permission to
But they have that B form. The thing's amazing, this is nineteen seventy five old that's farthest. That this Carol, uh, asked her why I was there. She didn't know why I was there. Nineteen seventy five, Breeze Ranch.
Famous architect? I mean, with that, what qualifications?
Twenty one. We are, we have been working on this one, but it's been, the committee is really, really engaged on this. We have ten people in there. And it's just really engaging. So we've had over fourteen hundred responses to the survey, which is more than double, almost triple, like even
And how's it, how's, what's the?
Yellow was skewing, but not by a lot. We have a lot of comments.
I'm sure.
And they've been hardcore. I mean, like, worst thing I've ever seen too. Oh, my God. It's like, okay.
I love that it's the Needham Rockets colors. Don't make it the Needham Rockets. So the board's gonna have to, you know, take a position on this, maybe even in August.
Did you see something about changing it to put the, the um weather vane up at the top?
It doesn't, it's not true. He said it would be really, really, really hard to embroider or to make it where we want to use it, because.
I still feel people upset.
We can ask them.
I, I thought we talked about it.
We talked. No, 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 I sent, we made, I sent some other people too.
We, we can ask it, but that's what he said.
Well, frankly, if we can embroider the seal.
So this is what, right, we're trying to do things that we look.
I just wonder if that would answer some concerns, a lighthouse situation.
The yellow, actually, people say less of that.
That's true, because it blew with water.
We can say that's operational, yes.
Do we say so? Well, we, yeah, let's come on.
Yeah, we will have our information. Uh, we, we have an hour queue out, uh, actually, a request for quotes out for going out for the seal part. And so it's been a wait to this fiscal year. And we'll get that out and um I I would say we're on a path to Maytown meeting for the seal. But we, we'll be down to plenty of time if we can.
Yeah, there'll be some interesting.
I'm amazed by the polls.
People don't read the blurb, so they're unhappy that we're getting rid of this seal.
They think we're, the logo's a seal, seals not.
Well, we've only ever had one, yes, so I can understand that they don't, you know, the idea.
So we drafted an email to send back to them. Expanded active and passive recreation facilities, so um, this, I think, came from parking lot as a request to the board several years ago. And we're moving forward with the ones that have come to the top from the ARA Working Group. Um, the tennis courts, the action sports park and
Right, now this is also on here, on people.
That was expanded recreation is tennis as well, yes.
All right, this is also, if, if my memory serves, this is one, uh, boat ramp on South Street that was, I think, over engineered. It just needed to be like a small dock, it was an actual boat ramp. And the neighbors went through the roof. And I think that was just so in the background, but I'm not saying we shouldn't revisit.
The commission didn't want to. They didn't.
We saw authorization. Yes, that's spent off, deny.
It's still there.
So this too is operationalized.
I think it is because.
And the feasibility for the Park and Pickleball.
Wait, that's not yay.
And did everyone hear that?
But it's not in typical laws.
It'll come into the, so capital plan.
Capital plan, but it's not something that others.
All right.
The barn.
So the first one was, what are we gonna do with Rich Hill and Nike? And this is the barn. Somebody wanted this on here last year, but we've got it in the plan and.
Right, actually, it is, you know, operation.
Yep, okay, so that's a yay. Twenty four is also operationalized. This was a request from, I think, I don't know. Couple years ago.
Do we have an app or a map or a?
We have, we have, we have great maps. We got a, um
Trail marker?
Oh, yes.
We have a design for a trail.
Are they not for the trails, Mark?
Uh, no, I am anticipating that transportation will request funding in the next second cycle to be able to
And there's possibility for us to put our logo.
I was just gonna say. Be something that has our logo on it.
We're ready.
Was it all already?
We don't have an app yet.
No, they're, they're talking about physical.
Okay.
Do we need an app? Or wouldn't we just get on all trails and put our trails on all trails?
Again, these didn't come from me.
I think even Google Maps has some trails.
They may already be. Yeah, that's probably on all trails too.
So is this operational?
This, this meeting is really showing me the difference between like free boards ago and this. Why is it here?
Felt like with a boat instructor. Three years ago, ate this giant cow and now it's moving through and now we can pass.
Okay, update parking payment technology. We have that, that procurement's out.
Company that's been selected and we're checking.
What's the name of it?
Yes, it's an acronym and they're out of camp.
So they aren't a name brand that somebody would already have?
Um, no, but it's, they're all interchangeable, that we've learned. In fact, um, our um parking enforcement company, which was one of the proposals, they work with that company so that their information will flow to the parking enforcement and vice versa.
But it looks like you'll need another app.
This is the moment for infrastructure as well. It's minimal infrastructure. It's mostly signage, which our folks will, our BPW will have to install.
We're not moving away from coins yet. This is a, just first step is the app.
Multi, multiple options to pay.
So while we still have coins, then I'm imagining we won't do any of this variable pricing that we've talked about. I mean, it's harder with coins.
But Boston still takes plans and they have various.
Do they?
Yeah, okay.
Just to comment that the parking study made recommendations around changing the pricing and changing the permits and the hours were remarked and our discussions will start. We have very little good data about how many people are parking for how long. We'll have much better from that. So I think, you know, the policy recommendations would be very informed if we have the app at least.
Also, I'm just gonna say, when we get to actually having this app, I'm gonna do the BPA. Cause I remember I went to the NMA the very first year I was on this board and I came back and I'm parking app and everybody else said to me, there's no way we could do that here. So finally, after however many years.
Do it here.
It's so much more.
Yeah, I don't like. Is this operational now since it's?
Well, uh, yeah, we're talking twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven.
I mean, we'll be bringing you more parking.
This is just method of paying in terms of parking policy that will be something for our future. These are the goals, lots.
Right, it's not done. Lots still to do.
So the planning department, um, they did get funds for this. Um, and the planning board is prioritizing the parking study, so I think that one can operationalize through twenty seven.
So, well, just, uh I agree it's operationalized, but how do we, do we need to like update this goal? Not only to implement it, but then to talk about the policy decisions that need to be rolled out, or do we just?
I think that I think we're gonna bring you, like, we've part of your packet was the parking study, the art study. We'll be giving you more objectives in the future under these categories, but I don't think we're ready on parking until we have the app and then also probably some brake line up. Is there more down there?
Yeah, just twenty seven, twenty eight.
Yes. Is the planning board department study different from the ones in the packet?
They are studying the uh requirements in the zoning. How many spaces you have to have, there ought to be business downtown, that kind of thing.
But also, also, um like overnight parking and and multifamily housing. I mean, it's not just.
Overnight parking is us.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about the, part of the parking study was downtown and and meter parking, but some of it was multifamily, like how many parking spaces they needed to include in the zoning for different.
Yes, yes, what, I'm sorry, yes, but they, anything that's going to play with permitting, what the, the parking requirements.
Is this the, is this the consulting funding that was approved in May?
Overnight parking, by the way. That's a, that's a tip. I'm surprised it hasn't come up again. People want overnight parking.
That was an interesting thing when we were in the snow. But that's, I guess, different. Maybe you could have that that was, that was, those cars were really in the way. Yeah, that was problematic, at least in this. So in a city, right, it would have been towed. Yes. Well, we're just plowed in. If you can tow.
Okay, so twenty seven to twenty eight, do we want to put these on? Eighteen to thirty six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somehow Katie and I didn't think twenty nine was a big list.
Um, I disagreed with myself.
Okay, I think, um, I think we rewrite the goal, but I think it needs to stay on here, this is a big level for us. You know, to make the decision as to whether to go forward.
So what will be, so we have the seven hundred fifty thousand, what's kind of the timeline going forward?
So we're, um, putting out our request proposals for consultants, then the quiet zone working group will get back together, I'm hoping a summer. But we need a consultant, we wanna, we need the new engineer.
Yeah.
Then the engineer needs to go, um, to the T to do that diagnostic review.
Okay.
It's, there's some sense that maybe Rosemary Street could be done more quickly, but we don't know yet. Whether that can be done before we have a diagnostic review after, so, um, there's a lot of things happening, but we just, we really wanna get that.
And the diagnostic review is what tells you the options at each crossing, or what does the diagnostic review mean?
It actually do, it can, it should, in this case, really firm, but the list of requirements for each cross. And, you know, some things are coming from new requirements from M B T A, you know.
And it's specific to each, given the characteristics of each.
Yeah.
And, and each has different existing. It's technology, like, so.
Yes. Yes, thrusters.
Rosemary has. We think Rosemary is simpler because it has more technology already in. Therefore, we think we might be able to go forward just with putting the. The mediums.
They already have costs.
So, and, and just again, so I understand, so once the, the engineer does the study and does this thing with the T. Then there would be enough information to create. A plan with a budget for each crossing?
So, yes, I mean, the board would have to make a recommendation to town meeting that we fund the construction.
And we'll probably do that in sequence, but.
Hmm, yes.
That'll be exciting.
So just to clarify, actually, is the lift. From us as a policy decision, or is it a regulatory?
Decision, so we put the asterisk when we think that the board and the staff will have to spend a lot of time.
So, I mean, it's both, it's policy and regulatory.
It's complex. And it's complex. Um, downtown redesign. We've awarded the, um, design contract to environmental partners, which I heard from. We're looking to do a pilot in twenty twenty five, next, in the next summer, pilots usually paint.
Okay.
Um, we did put something in the economic development bond bill today to support this pilot. We could do something more than just paint. Yeah, they, we had the opportunity.
When we last saw them, and we're talking about this, I was thinking they were wanting to do something to start during the summer. Is that still their plan or is that?
Our, our plan was to start to get the, to get a working group together to recommend to you. That there's this, you know, working group that's gonna meet with the consultants and start. It's kind of like overseeing or facilitating, so, um, we'll have that.
So that that will start in the summer?
Yeah, no, that'd be.
Wait, this summer?
We need to get them together.
Can, can we have a community meeting, so, so residents can offer their inputs to?
Oh, they were to do huge community outreach, that's why, one of the reasons why we picked them. A meeting is possible, but they're also gonna do like harvest there and like schools.
They wanted to be at everything.
Those is just part of the show.
Yes.
Right, people also will be on this committee, so. Those things, is that so?
Yeah. We have, um, we'll get you a draft charter composition. Given the size of this project, is this staying on here or is this operational?
That's really into you.
Right.
Me too. I mean, it's, it's not even in my court, it's at D P W, so I think it's fairly operationalized at this point, so.
So maybe just convening the.
The word order, I'll get them.
Okay.
You know, expanding snow removal was a goal of sort of a downtown, how we can do more. Um, I think this is a, a legacy one as well.
Doesn't tell, the comments that had was.
Just keeps rolling forward because we haven't had anything to evaluate.
Climate change will take care of it all.
And then our, our average, I was reading. Our average temperature has gone up three degrees and, you know, some decades. Let's leave it there and we can wave fondly at it next year.
Okay. Charis will come in and give us an update.
Right.
Shows whether it's snow or not.
I'm gonna put turn F Y two.
Actually, the problem we have now is ice, if the icing, we have some icing events.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Which is.
Cause it's raining.
Raining in the reasons, that's actually more dangerous than snow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. It's gonna.
Well, so do we wanna just jump to the school? Like, is our, is our snow program sufficient to cover icing issues that are? Taking the place of snow?
It's been just rolling forward. It's what we decided.
Give some guidance on.
I mean, just stick it in survey team, we'll look at it again next year if we had to do something.
Yeah.
She's gonna come in and talk.
Yes.
Challenges, we have.
Icing on this. It's icing, icing on the sidewalks. Different equipment in order, and then the question is how much solid? Do you wanna support?
And businesses are required to do ice removal on sidewalks, just so that's. So businesses.
Yeah, so I think it's so long as we change snow removal to. Facing. Well, I was impressed by the presentation to us, whenever it was, about the new technologies and using the brine and, you know. So they are adjusting and. Now taking into account implications.
Compared to the next two, thirty two and thirty three, I just received eleven emails.
And thirty four.
Comments from friends and neighbors who. Want this to be a higher priority, which I understand. I find myself currently more concerned about. Residents' ability to bicycle safely on the street with the production of a new rail trail. I think that needs to be a priority over the rail trail for sure. I guess, um.
Oh, that's just, uh, kind of separate, could the rail trail be one of the dog operation areas that we consider?
That might bang out.
Well, people are pretty attached to the rail trail, I think that the question here was whether we're gonna create. Or rail trail, an extension.
So the bridge and. Dover, we're getting a meeting together with Dover this summer because there's movement on Dover's part.
Yeah.
Um, so. Right. I think we need to do that, we need to see whether they're really doing it, um. There, there was a possibility that we were gonna bring the ground trail up over the bridge, uh, the center street, central ladder bridge. This may be not gonna happen, but that bridge was in the tip, but now. They may have to do, the state may have to do the Chestnut Street Bridge, because remember how they had all that, right, so they can't close two ports, two. Bridges, so I don't know how fa, I don't know what's gonna happen with that, maybe that chestnut goes over central.
Chestnut Street.
Well, I think, I've heard since that they're looking at that, because remember when.
Yeah.
The, uh, the utility was.
Was there with that stuff dumped in the river, or were we talking about something different?
Yes, that, but when they, they had to take apart a lot of the bridge, you know.
Yeah.
That's just a quick update, we'll let you know. Uh, so, I guess the, the question is, if we wanna tackle one of these, we have to pick an end, right? We know that it's, you know, millions to bring it up to the junction and it, it might be. That when we redevelop Chestnut Street and we do all the housing on Chestnut Street, that this is, that's the time to bring the rail trail up. Um, we could start talking about putting the. A path, a bike ped path into Newton from Newton Heights. And talking to the T about whether they were, or Mastodon are getting down, Mastodon getting down on the tip. So, I, I don't think you can do both, but we could do the second one.
Isn't the second one, in terms of just cost per mile, isn't the. The one from the heights to Newton a lot cheaper than that, or do I have that, than the, than? The one.
I think the engineer is most.
I just remember there was one, wasn't it the one where if you extended from the rail trail, it was just super expensive to go this tiny, short distance?
Yes, and the one that goes into Newton has processed the highway, so that's gonna be fabulous.
Yeah.
It'll be more expensive, but we're not paying.
Well, then we don't care.
But I, I don't. But it will take.
For us.
It will take effort for us to get the state to agree to do it.
Yeah.
But it's not, I don't think it's gonna cost us all that. I don't, I think they'll, if we end up getting it all, so the question is, should a objective of the board for fiscal twenty five be engaged with this? State to see if we can get the Newton portion.
No.
On the tip.
Yes.
The Newton Heights to Newton on the tip.
West Street.
You just said, uh, I mean, before we cross the highway. Can you, can you go, like, there's, there are two components, just cross the highway and we're going to go to Newton and then there's like before, the part just in Newton. You can do that too.
We could, it's a huge effort, it, we would have to pay for it. And if we do it to the stone dust standard, then it won't count, like, the state will require the. The rail trail, if it's on the tip, going over the river and then over the highway, um, to be, uh, aimed.
Okay.
I mean, I think it might make sense to see if we could get the funding first. For the bridge, and then if that is possible, then we commit our own funding.
The next tie in is that.
Well, I think they'll do the whole, we're gonna put the whole thing.
Right.
Like from.
Right, but yes, okay, but like not, not spend our own money in the absence of knowing whether we could get the state money for the bridge. I would like to know that we had the state money first, and then, and then. Like these really short rail trails, they're cute and everything, but I think it's a lot better if it connects to something.
Yeah.
But, but there's no support within Newton first.
Right.
There is no, no, Newton has the rail trail. They would love to extend, but they have to.
For bikes and pets.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, not, that's not a bus either.
Well, they have, they have an existing. Almost to where.
With parallels news.
Get picked up by the bridge. Right, so their portion of that would be reasonably small, I know that Newton is otherwise occupied, but we're really talking about. Point ways down the road, so presumably if this were. An active project, we could negotiate that with them. They're not interested in the bus.
No, no.
No, 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 dear mom.
No, it's not because they're interested in bikes. On the greenway right now, no, they like their walkers.
Yeah.
Oh, they don't allow bikes on? I don't know whether bikes are allowed, but there's not a lot of enthusiasm was what I heard. Even from some, like, it's controversial.
The people who were on the committee were certainly.
But it, when they heard from their neighbors. It was controversial, so.
Would, um, well, because originally we were talking about widening it to accommodate even bus, and it was gonna be just gigantic.
Right. This would be a, what is it, ten?
So, last year we put both of them. They're thirty three and weirdly, um, sort of, I, I think it's, it's, it's over the two of them, I think that's, it's like too many words. So, the question is, do we wanna tackle one, and if we wanna tackle one, is it the one that's in heights? As opposed to.
Well, would you be able to, if, let's assume that the state. Ponyed up the money and we had the trail that went over the bridge and connected to Newton and allowed us. Need of nights to ride our bicycles into their city, uh, would we, would somebody be able to go to the green line?
Yes.
Yes.
Take all the way down to Easy Street by. Oh, yeah, lumber, um.
National.
National lumber, and then it's.
Right there, okay.
And there's trying to be, yeah, come out and then you go around.
So you're pretty.
Yeah.
You got, you got. Be clear that the tip is a seven year proposition, so like.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, but that's like the start, right, I mean, we're taking the longer view, right, the longer you wait to start, the longer that it's not happening.
So the start, though, would be to put the project on the tip. And they're gonna need to try to get another tip, now if they said, there's no way we're ever doing this, I, I think I would say, I'm where Josh is, like that. Something to get people from the train to the business center on a bike or running is not a bad idea, but I'd like to know.
Are there any drawbacks to putting this project or to trying to put this project on the tip?
No, it's just the staff.
Oh, time continues.
There's another project you want to. We can continue with yourself.
Right.
We can look into that, because they are in different categories, but there's no cars.
Sorry, what's the tip?
Oh, the transportation improvement plan, or the federal ones.
So, and that goes to the state?
Yeah.
And how, we know that the state would pay for it?
No, 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 no. This is like, do we start?
Okay.
It's just like M S B A, really, it's like we throw our hat in the ring and the Navy pick us to give us. But I did, but talk to Monica Tibbetts. Let's have a conversation about it.
They love these type of projects.
I mean, this, I think I have heard, like, people do want things like this.
And I think if, if there's no drawback, putting this project or trying to get it on the tip, I say we get that started. See what happens, we see where we are in five years and, I mean, there's so much. That goes along with this, it's not just getting that bridge, right? Cause we don't have safe transit from the existing rail trail or any part of town. Two would be our new rail trail, we've got a lot of work to do in between. But if we don't start, we're never gonna. Never gonna start.
Right, we're gonna, so we're gonna do pieces. But this is a piece that, like, and if you're already, if you live in the heights or you live near this, and then you could go to Newton and go. To the green line and I do see, you know, some value in this beyond recreation to actually get somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, when people told us that they really don't like to cross the highway on.
Yeah.
And pedestrian.
You know, if, if we're successful with M B T A communities and, and even if we're not, like, housing in the, in the. Longer term, I mean, you can need to get to work now, so if, if work is in the other direction from the commuter route, then this will. Could offer an alternative to, to, so, like, I've seen no drawback to trying to get it on the tip and moving forward.
The reason maybe now is that Monica Tibbetts not, you know, isn't, knows Newton and knows us and so. She ran the one twenty eight business shuttle.
This one, this one too, versus the tiny little bit that was so expensive, I mean, I think that's harder to justify.
So, I'm the type, the, yeah, Chestnut Street connection to Chestnut Street. We, that was starting, making with price cycles, like two to.
It was exactly twenty five hundred.
I kind of wonder, isn't with the housing we develop. Could we look into getting off the rail trail off of like. Was it, uh, Zurich or, um, Chamber Street? Can the rail trail come off, is there a property in Bucks? The rail trip at that point, can we come off there into their property, cut across your high rock school, jog onto. Oak. And get off to Chestnut, rather than doing, trying to get around onto Chestnut, under the bridge. It's just a different way to do it.
And maybe less expensive, and you could do it with me, and I don't, I don't think we know. And maybe less expensive, and you could do it with me, and I know, I don't think we know. If you're gonna end up going through that, so I don't, I don't know that it's actually impossible, but it doesn't hurt. One, that question is, is that where you wanna spend your resources?
Most is, my thought is, is waiting to make this thing come to life. Without paying, cause I think the uh connection to Chestnut Street, although. That's what we all want, that'd be the way to get to Chester, Chester Street, the bread, but so expensive, so unsatisfyingly complicated. Um, this might be a good work.
You'd need another feasibility study.
Yes, yeah.
So I I guess my caution is, if you can't do everything.
Right.
So you need to pick which end you want.
I I would, and then the other point is, then about the.
We're not taking it off.
Right, the Chestnut Street part. Dover doesn't want us right now, but like sense of Newman is connected, we're connecting to New.
Something, Dover connected is something that.
And we'll look at the map though, on the, on the, and but, you know, we did talk about this while we're doing the housing, the building, maybe this.
I mean, fundamentally, I think if we needed a visibility study, I go back to Heidi's point, which is. Is there some street we could make much better, more feasible to ride a bike on would be.
I mean, I just wanna say, like, our bike infrastructure, and by that, I mean, like, paint and signs is terrible. It just doesn't exist and right now, half that stuff is free from state. And I I have to express frustration, I don't understand why that is. Difficult to implement, I I know that it's, it is difficult to implement and I'm not, I'm not uh. Saying that anyone's not doing their jobs, but I think that we have, like, very well expressed reference. From the residents that they want to be able to safely bike through town. And we know that that's not possibility just now, and they're. From the getting killed. Help us create this mobility. Yeah, I know, but in the meantime, we could put up some signs. I don't, but where, like.
Where?
I I don't, I don't wanna sound provocative, it's just, we we have a bike lane. There are some bike signs out there, but they're twenty years old and they're not adequate, sure.
Well, and and we have many places that are very short stretches and then the bike lane disappears, so I think, I think. You know, I don't wanna think about Karis's intentions, but I think she's looking at that going, it doesn't do me much good. For that one little stretch right in front of the high school, which immediately disappears.
Yeah, I know, I get that, and I think you're right, but at the same time, what what's happening is that people think we're not listening. And I I would like people to feel safe to move around town and also to know that we are working on it, so maybe. In the short term, you know, we need to be more. Outspoken about the things that we are doing and when we expect some results. And I think, I think it just bears saying, a lot of people have opinions of what you should be doing. And a lot of them involve stormwater and a lot of them involve roads and a lot of them, so. Absolutely true, she's doing twenty million dollars with a project this summer. Yeah, it's it's not a criticism of it. I know that, it's just that they're literally, I I don't, we have to have a plan, there has to be this mobility for me, they have to say, this is where we want these.
Can I just clarify what they will be doing in this mobility plan? Will they be um, laying out a strategic plan of. Where we want to have bike lanes? Okay, cause that seems to me that that would be a good thing to do, you know, how do you get to?
I think it wasn't just bikes, it was pens and.
Yeah, it's all mobility, yeah. But but, you know, and all things are interconnected, right? We have this downtown plan that's coming again. Right? If you don't get that set properly, then you don't set anybody else up for stuff, why don't say that's number one?
I guess that's my point, he's like, here we're talking about establishing this awesome rail trail. But we don't have a way to get to it.
Right.
We don't have a way to get to the one we currently have, we need to, we need to work on the in between, that's maybe significantly less fancy. But it's at least safe. Yeah, I mean, you have to get off a hierarchy, the reason you, I think the reason you can't do the thing you proposed is that the T. We don't have a license from Kirk, from High Rock Street and they won't get it, they need it, so. You'd have to walk your bike up the hill at High Rock, but we could put signs, like walk your bike up that weird hill and then go this way. We haven't done it because it seems so.
Completely acknowledged, that is not at all like, just put up some signs, I get that.
But it also feels like it maybe shouldn't be placed.
Well, so, so the this mobility plan is just kicking off, right? So sometime over the course of this year, we're gonna have them in to talk about what's going there, so there will be more discussion. And this downtown plan will be a focus of conversation, so people will be hearing more about it in the next year. Maybe they've, than they've heard, I think there's still frustration because everybody wants it yesterday. But but I think our, my opinion would be our efforts are better at trying to get to some long term solution. Than doing patchy little things.
I'm not, I kind of agree and I kind of don't, I I think right now it's so catchy, like our bike infrastructure is all over the place that. You know, some infrastructures use exclusively for recreation, like the rail trip right now, some is used exclusively for transportation, probably variable. Because it's so patchy, like we wanna be in a place where any infrastructure could be used used for either, both transportation and recreation. And I think, I think you do have to start in certain parts, like there are, like the high school, when we were talking about West Street, that is a destination. You do need to start with about how you, you know, make more infrastructure in certain places and then connect in between. So I don't know if we can do it all in the center, I mean, I think we do need to do it in in different places.
Well, I think that's the purpose of the mobility plan, but I think it's going to expect that the anchor at least starts in the center. So you have something to strengthen from to get to be more substantive.
Maybe in the short term, we could have the transportation committee come in and tell us what's the scope of the mobility plan, so that they could tell us, they could tell. The residents and we could all.
Yeah, and they're understanding that it worked too, they began the sprint, so.
Okay, so thirty two stays at thirty six months for now, it stays on the plan, thirty three comes off because it's redundant. Thirty four, I'll rewrite it, but it's something to do with explore um.
Yeah.
State funding of this idea.
Yeah.
And it's.
Yeah, explore application for state fund.
I always keep that, the um, thirty four would be there, yeah, thirty.
Is it explore or is it apply?
That's apply.
I don't think you can really apply.
We'll meet, we'll meet with Mastodon.
Yeah.
Last yard of state rep that we have.
Do we initiate the process?
Yeah, initiate, that's better, yeah, okay.
You have any way or whatever is investigate sounds very mushy.
And then we'll have to meet with Newton. So thirty five is also redundant, we're not worried about it.
Right, yeah.
And we got. The Central Avenue Street Bridge on the tip, Dover did it, so that doesn't count against us. Yes, that's it.
What's the timeline for that? Just changed.
Project for approximately five years.
Okay.
Will this be the one competing for the chest?
Tip is a seven year process, so you're a couple years into it, it'll be a while.
So we got the design portion of this, uh, through Senator Congressman Austin Boss, he helped us get design funded. That helped us get it onto the tip, um, you know, this, this, sometimes projects that are fully designed. That are reasonably priced can get slotted in earlier because something else got pushed, so. It's it's very fluid, but we always say five to seven years. It is, it's like getting on the MSBA though, it's really a good one.
Which one would be goal number five?
Um, well, uh, we think that this is really operationalized at this point. Cause the chief does the reports and he comes in every year, but it it seems like this might be a place under climate of safety, including bike lanes. Where we might wanna add an objective um, after year for mobility, so maybe a note that this might get updated. Um, in the refresh.
Sure. This is under goal.
Yeah, I I I think. One way or another, whether it's with this mobility plan or some other plan, that that we have an idea as Mary Ann was saying. Where are we gonna have these major bike routes, you know, so that they get people where they want to go, whether that is the high school, the town center. Or wherever it's, you know. That we have some, because that we could build to that, and then we could have a staged process, maybe, you know, can't do it once. But we could have a staged process and then people, you know, we could lay that out.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't, you don't get a bike culture until you have a bike infrastructure.
So are we just having the chief come in once a year now? Is that the?
What we've been doing, you can, we can do more if you want.
Well, so we have been to a stage where we've been coming in regularly. Right, and then we thought when we had the statistician, we would take a look at what was possible. For reporting, I think the question on reporting is, have we learned enough about reporting to know that we don't need to do it more frequently? That was one of the questions was, do we need to talk about it in public more frequently? So we just haven't had that conversation, so that's what I'm asking, is there a decision?
What are you talking about? Um, I remember kind of conversations, police discussions, the race, ethnicities of people. Have interaction to feed, but that's the conversation.
And and of their, all their activity, yeah, both of those.
Right. And and I, I think we have more data where the data seems to suggest. That it's not problematic, but. I don't know that we're ready to come to that condition, um. So, so is the question whether once a year is adequate, is the right frequency?
It seems like at every instance that he, they come in, we have um, a few more questions about the data, so maybe. Following that meeting, they were to wrestle up the data. That we requested and send a supplemental to the report. And we've reviewed that and decided if there's any, you know, if there's further questions, we could invite them back. They're also almost done with their accreditation, so they'll be in to talk to you about that.
Okay.
So maybe that.
I just think, given, given all the questions and given the tensions that continue to exist. I think having that, talk about good work that they are doing in the community is a valuable thing. And um, and I'm not sure that once a year is sufficient to do that, I, that just, it's.
I guess the the balance to that is, what is the time and effort on their part to compile?
If they didn't compile, we're gonna think about how.
Well, I mean, they certainly can talk about what they're doing, whether they compile the data more than once a year, and that might be sort of a meeting ground.
Yeah, I I presume that the statistician is doing it regularly, that. That they don't wait to do it once a year, because we hired something with a certain skill set that I presume is getting used all the time.
I think we would.
Right, so, um, yeah, I just don't know.
Okay, might be a good thing to know, you know, some of the stuff, they may be relying on other sources, I mean, it's so extensive. It it looks like a lot of work.
Yeah, and it could be that maybe the thing to do is to look at that report, pull it apart and say, we're gonna report. At this time of year on the following things, and we're gonna report at this time of year on a different set of things. So maybe that's how we think about bringing them in, I I don't know.
Is though year over year data is so important, you're like.
Yes, but you could do year over year on different cycles, that's what I suggest. And and it could be the, we could have a more focused conversation. Instead of the huge sprawling one that we have, we could think about breaking it into more bite sized chunks.
Well, are there particularly things in the report that you're mostly interested in? Maybe you could look at, we could look at that. Could send you categories. I mean, I don't know that you need to know necessarily, I don't know that board members are that interested in like, how many people want to do which training or. I don't, I, some of them are non-sensical too, right?
The best practice is what they're doing, it's, I think that's helpful for people to see what the need was up to. Now.
They get a lot of.
Again, they got.
Doing a lot of good stuff.
So.
Yeah, they're really up their social media game.
I found the meeting really helpful, I think that's great, but you're right, it is depending on, yeah, it's like, sometimes it's so much.
Yeah, although I wouldn't be upset if it.
I guess it would just, again, depend on whether there's interactions between the data, right? So if you, it is possible that if we broke it up. That you'd be seeing one piece that might relate to another piece.
Well, no, we'd have to think about how you put it together, and I just, I have looked at very hard to think about it that way, but I just remember that it felt like. It was a lot of information in one thing, and I would hate for it to turn into the, they only come once a year. Cause I think we got into trouble that way.
I think no problem bringing them in, and I don't think they have any problem coming, but I I I, I haven't wrapped my head around, but just breaking up data, so I'd have to, but we will.
Was the accreditation achieved?
Um, they're engaged in the National Police Department accreditation.
Yeah, but not to beat a dead horse here, but maybe there is also just a small subsection of it. That wouldn't be that onerous, that could be twice a year or quarterly or something. Cause there's probably, if we looked at it, and I haven't looked at it in a long time, but if we look at it, there probably is a relatively small number of items that are sensitive enough. That you would be worried about them, you know what I mean? It's it's probably less than twenty percent of that. That actually is sensitive, it it along the lines of what you're saying. So maybe you could do the annual whole big report and you could do it every six months of the sensitive or even quarterly of the sensitive or whatever we got, but. It's probably a small number of indicators.
Well, can I say, things happen every time, right? So we went through all of the catalytic converters. Um, being stolen, right? But we didn't really talk about it at subport till after it was non-issue, right? Should they have been in earlier, just also to be a community flag in another venue, you know, I, so. I think there are pieces like that, you know, the car break-ins.
The nut blocks.
Yes, they've done it on social media, which is good for people who are on social media, but they're, you know, people come to this from all different angles, so. The one thing we know is you can never communicate to everybody in one effort.
I'm sure to any presentation, just fair. Well, I could still think we operationalize it, but put it, I, yeah, on the op, I put that on the operations, yes. Minimum.
Fine. You guys want to take a break?
Um, five thirty, is that okay? Black policy, yay?
Yeah, yeah.
For thirty nine, I was looking at the materials that we sent you, you know, we have the agriculture plan, we have the parking plan, we're gonna have a mobility plan, I mean, we're really starting to put them together. I don't know what we wanna do this year on this goal, but.
I was gonna say, I don't think it's zero eighteen, I think we need to get more of those done before we do uh Uber or something or other.
Is there an idea to prioritize among all the several parts?
We would have a school plan that's not settled.
I think to keep it, cause I think Miles, Miles and I had. And Karis was my intern.
Two thousand and seven, mass per over.
Master overview, a survey of existing master plans, which was done, so by, so Paris Lust. Noting the many existing master.
But we have, we have it in our thing that we would like to have, at least update you on what we have now. Because, you know, if you wait too long, then then some of them are gonna be out of date, right? So like, what's missing? I think we're missing kind of an economic development plan for sure. Um, you know, what are we usually having on those? Water, we're working on transportation, climate, um, economic development, housing, so we have a lot of components, but. We could, we could, Miles could create a report that what we have and the sort of whatever done and. Yeah, then we could maybe mid-year talk about some something we should be adding.
Yeah, I mean, already we defer some economic development. Items because we have all this other stuff going on, but I think. Understanding how they all fit together would help.
And the. Sort of the value of this, like, what what do we, what do we, if we had. Maybe master plan. What does it enable us to do?
Well, the. It it's really a. It puts together all of the sub-plans, and you do have to prioritize among them, but. We have such a robust. Climate roadmap. That when we ask for goals, they give us the next two, like, so it's so easy, and that we're doing that with parking, and now we're doing that with housing, but. Economic development, we're a little bit sort of. So that's, and when we do the stormwater plan, you know. It's in where the utilities.
When we know, when we do mobility, yeah.
Yeah, but if we can have.
I'd like to keep.
Really clear. Directives from each of those, like the climate action plan, I think those are really good.
Yeah.
Self-prioritized lists, so that every time, you know, but an opportunity comes up, that you're right, they step right in and there's something right there and. Having that for every area would help us. Dither.
Mm-hmm, so all that's happening in the next year is to inventory. Yeah, the plans that we have. That makes sense to me. But I don't know that I would have any expectation or wanted to devote time to more than that till we get a couple of these other pictures back. You know, get the piece back from state on housing, you know, I feel like there's pieces that need to land. Number forty is yay?
Question.
Well, that's a yay, do we?
Miles and I have a calendar appointment in October. To uh, make sure we have, know who's on, so they can meet in June.
Also, maybe a few different.
Yeah, yeah, so my question was the charter. This is the battle that we did.
Yeah.
Do we leave it at that?
We heard very. I think we should, I think you should do the bylaw one and then say, this is so successful, let's do the chart.
Okay, fair, that makes sense. And I think we have time, right, because the the thought plan was. Uh, bylaws on the fives and charters on zero, so let's go through the charter and see where we are.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense.
Do we really even say bylaw, B Y L A W, and get the heck going out, is it, we, we wanna just. Or do we want the committee to decide?
I never write. I don't know, whatever is correct.
View of the administrator changes that this.
Committee, perfect.
Right, how do you spell your name?
Oh, so that's a done.
You won't get a conclusive answer.
DPW based construction, I think is operational. We've got the design funding and. They're moving ahead. And no, we we heard about forty-two earlier.
Right.
The library project is in design, the the younger adult room is in design. Um, the first project in the cath upgrade was the kitchen, I think. Is it fair to say that? They may. Talk about those, because that didn't, I'm not sure that's their.
Prior. I, yes, the staff, because the board there. Capital parties in last year's mission should have changed for this year.
Just to be clear, the the order was the COA's order, but there there was a lot of worry about the. The travel news.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, so what's in the for this past year was the kitchen first, and the bedroom second, and now we are gonna ask every visitor to move off of this.
Okay.
Yeah.
The kitchen first and the.
What we were just. So it would still, they kept it second, it would still be many years up.
Okay.
And I just wanted to be clear that it was their priority.
Can you, can you just remind me, do we have a um, commitment? From BI to keep the traveling meals program for some period of time?
They have to give us a year's notice, but that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, so we have at least two.
They know.
When you say that stuff has happened, you're saying they're not giving us years' notice in.
I can't imagine they're gonna change their.
So that would enable flipping these.
Yes.
Things.
Yeah.
And.
And the staff has been working to extend the hours. So they, I know, um. I know I saw a sign that the fitness rooms open later. Isn't always necessarily fitting with the client tells hours.
It's a type of thing.
Yeah, and I've heard this from other people.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it is the best deal in town, which is why they're all there.
And then if you're not a time, this is true.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that I think is a bigger, that beside the bike is that, I mean. How did that be like?
Yeah.
Why y'all?
Maybe.
It was used to state, built to state.
Not at all.
No, but we do get grants, so that might be why. We get a lot of grants.
So they require it.
I know that Natick. You can go through any account, so I think it's a serious. I don't know what the.
The whole shot program requires cooperation.
Yeah, yeah. We did, um, we are engaging with T though on the practice basis. We have funding in the a four twenty-five budget to pay for the licensing of. Thirteen spaces licensed to create twelve.
Do they do any kind of preservation system for the fitness room?
Um, currently, no, but that's one thing that's being discussed, and I think people uh, would not like it, but it's one.
Are we talking about just like an unpleasant level of business or safe of business?
I think in some cases it's both.
Well, it just machines are not available, so.
Yeah.
But they don't have like a attendant to participate in ratio they need to maintain or anything.
I think it's driven by the number of, I mean, have you been lately, it's a small room, and so. By the number of machines. But it is staffs. Happened to have been to the one in Natick.
I don't know. My general answer is, well, now sign up for slots, people, everybody thought they would need it, and the answer is now they like it, because you walk in and the machine's available, so. There's none of that.
So the funding was in F twenty-six. For the. Next, for the first phase of cap.
Design.
Design.
Yeah.
Um, does this stay on?
Reasons.
No.
It's in the capital plan.
Fine, that's not a great. I mean.
I think what you say.
We need to, does this mean we're increasing getting people to be drawn?
That's one of the ways, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the trick here is institutionalized, we have on our end.
Yes. I think that maybe meeting with them and talking about this.
Have you been in forty-four, the finally then?
Forty-four.
Other than the Attorney General blog, yeah, right.
Yes.
Yay. But yay was your direction, well.
Right, we wanna, um. We'll, we'll need to uh, end work because.
Okay.
Take ten minutes again.
Yeah, recess, quick recess, get food, come back, work. Wait, yeah, just recess.
I'd like not to eat right in front of them.
I know, I'm like royalty. This, this probably, you can't photograph a photo of them, either.
Really?
Good photos.
There used to be. Audience that became, and he was toileting. And it would be a great honor to participate in.
Oh, my God.
Oh, let me.
Working on, we are working on options.
Yeah.
Forty-seven, yeah.
Done, yay. So. Forty-six. Forty-two. Forty-three. Forty-four. Forty-five. Forty-six. Forty-seven. Forty-eight. Forty-nine. Fifty. Fifty-one. Fifty-two. Fifty-three. Fifty-four. Fifty-five. Fifty-six. Fifty-seven. Fifty-eight. Fifty-nine. Sixty. Sixty-one. Sixty-two. Sixty-three. Sixty-four. Sixty-five. Sixty-six. Sixty-seven. Sixty-eight. Sixty-nine. Seventy. Seventy-one. Seventy-two. Seventy-three. Seventy-four. Seventy-five. Seventy-six. Seventy-seven. Seventy-eight. Seventy-nine. Eighty. Eighty-one. Eighty-two. Eighty-three. Eighty-four. Eighty-five. Eighty-six. Eighty-seven. Eighty-eight. Eighty-nine. Nine. Eighty-one. Eighty-two. Eighty-three. Eighty-four. Eighty-five. Eighty-six. Eighty-seven. Eighty-eight. Eighty-nine. Eighty-ten. Eighty-one. Eighty-two. Eighty-three. Eighty-four. Eighty-five. Eighty-six. Eighty-seven. Eighty-eight. Eighty-nine. Eighty-ten. Eighty-one. Eighty-two. Eighty-three. Eighty-four. Eighty-five. Eighty-six. Eighty-seven. Eighty-eight. Eighty-nine. Eighty-ten. Eighty-one. Eighty-two. Eighty-three. Eighty-four. Eighty-five. Eighty-six. Eighty-seven. Eighty-eight. Eighty-nine. Eighty-ten. Eighty-one. Eighty-two. Eighty-three. Eighty-four. Eighty-five. Forty-six. Forty-six needs to stay on.
We're gonna, we are working on options.
Yeah.
And that's your.
Forty-seven, yeah.
Done, yay. So, how do you want to update on?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had what I thought was actually a very productive meeting yesterday, Katie, do you agree?
Yeah.
She's like, what?
Yeah.
Uh, really focused on this right now.
Yeah, I can understand that.
Yes.
No, we had, we had a, um, uh, internal meeting, I guess you could say, uh, trying to decide what to, what comes next and what direction to take it. I thought it was actually really productive. We identified our next steps and some potential strategies and we're moving forward. But we, um, haven't yet gotten to the part where we.
I'm gonna make it recommend.
Make it public or make any recommendations or for.
So, K is on the dock, but it's not.
Yeah, with, with the input of, of the people we asked, we'll make some recommendations to our next step. It will be after.
Okay.
Will it involve a public discussion?
Yeah, it's just not quite there yet. You gotta put more structure around it, because otherwise it gets a little leggy.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see us make recommendations to the board about what that committee will do, as opposed to just set a committee on a bylaw.
Right.
Tried before.
I think what we said was just, you know, the vague goal of a tree bylaw without any sense of what the tree bylaw would do was, is too much to do. So we wanted to narrow down that, give it some structure before we bring it out to.
Okay. On base of species.
Mm-hmm. Among other things.
HVAC agrees. Okay. So this stays on.
I think it should stay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alteries all the time.
I think we should change it to, um, something about.
There's more tree related ones in the newbie piles, so it might be worth, worth something.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, we are in the process of drafting an electric vehicle policy, first policy, so I think this probably should go to zero to eighteen because we need it really.
Three meters.
Yeah, but it's some kind of leaders, legacy leaders.
Me.
Anyway, yes.
Leaders.
So this one go eight, zero to eighteen.
Is the timeline gonna change there?
Yeah, we would move this to zero to eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, I think fifty's operationalized. We got it approved and now we're just waiting. For the debut.
Just, you know.
No way.
The state changed the rules today. Um, our application is under the new rules, but not under the new time. Um, Paul Grummer contacted Gabby and said that, um, we shouldn't have to amend our application, so the old, the old, our current application meets new rules. So that's good, but it is not subject to the one hundred and twenty day required responding to that, considering we're already over. Um, Paul seems to think that the new timeline is still good for us, should still spur along the ones that are sitting in queue.
You'd like they wouldn't take up new ones.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say that'd be really unfair to start with the new ones.
Right, they were gonna changing the rules but not clearing the deck. So they're putting their energy in the wrong place.
The difference is that this is the, the application.
That is commanding somebody's look at. So, so we don't have any idea how long it might take.
Consider, maybe a hundred twenty days from now.
Right.
Okay. Well, it's better than what they were doing, like three years, yeah.
But this one is definitely average.
Okay, yay.
That's very.
No, that's not.
No, that's not, yeah, yay is done. Operationalizes.
Sir, if you want to see.
Get it straight, Kevin.
Great, yes, wait, well, that's a great charging.
We get the charge.
One of the things that I actually have, um, asked the police about is that we're getting a lot of complaints about people parking in them who are not charging, so we're trying to figure out what we can enforce.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Um, I gave you some.
Oh, good, good, good. Does this, like, what does that mean? Does that mean ticketing or?
Okay, yes, it would be ticketing.
Yeah. Things reasonable.
Right.
All time. So, you mean like, if you're not charging, you get a ticket?
People are parking in them with no intent of charging.
Yeah.
With a possible vehicle.
Okay.
So. Certainly we can't ticket.
Yes.
If you're plugged in, you just get charged with overage, but if you park there and you're not even charging, then you have to get taken.
Or what if you park and you charge there, and when you finish charging and continue?
There's an overage.
Renting this place, but a non-charging vehicle.
Yeah, can't, can't get that overage fee because they don't.
Right, they're not plugging in, they're not even playing the game.
Through the charge.
Our overage. Yes, so what do we have to do so that we can be taken in? So we, um, we just both doing research.
Yeah, we're doing research.
That's.
Mm-hmm.
End of the list, wow.
Yeah, well, no, now we all, okay, call them the newbies.
The newbie.
Page twelve just showed you what, um, some of the other things that you had sent out for referral and, um, for budgets. That discussion item is page thirteen.
Do we need to, do we wanna trap what happened? I mean, we wanna make sure that none of these got lost in whole.
Um, the Board of Health I know talked about individual serving alcohol bottles. I don't know that they've resolved anything, but they did talk about it.
Yeah.
Um, the Mobility Committee is taking up the bike route map with this, um, in-encency grant. Same with the next one. I don't know if the mountain biker trail extension is on there, but I sent it to them, but I, well, we're gonna invite them in. Bike, bikes on sidewalk, run to them. And level three charging station we got funded for. A town meeting.
That's for the school bus.
Well, or jet, just. In general, it could be in general, so it's intended, it's intended for Newton.
It's intended for Newton.
Can, can you remind me, did, did we pull the trigger on a water school bus or?
No, we were hoping to get a grant if we have a charter.
Yes.
Oh.
Well, for grant, but it's also in the capital plan that if we don't get a, a grant that, uh, it's proposed for funding in F by twenty-six.
Thank you.
Um, increasing the budget for town tree planting. I know they did a, they put money in for a town tree inventory this year. I don't remember if there's more money for planting.
They were pressing on, they're not planting, so they didn't end up in front of us.
It'll. We'll keep it.
NCAC did get it.
That means restricted. I mean, I, I keep saying to some extent, there are a lot of people in, you know, who could afford to plant trees on the property.
Yep.
It's not the town's job to necessarily plant everybody's trees.
Well, if they're not being.
Yeah, these trees.
Those, you're right, I mean, eight months, eight months are free, a maple seedling's even half that. So.
Might I suggest that the tree group talk about this, but I think the issue is people aren't planting them and we wanna preserve our canopy, so.
Yeah.
And they're so proud of the work that they do. Yeah, um, NCAC did get funding. Uh, and we're, um, we do have art schools. In the.
Okay.
Cooling infrastructure.
Uh, this one. It's no cooling infrastructure.
Well, we put the tent up.
No, 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 at Rosemary.
This is in, uh, six, so they'll have to resubmit. It's a part.
Yeah, but it was in, swear that it was in the budget for last year.
Um, not to be funded in point five, so it could have been an out here. They did submit it.
They did submit it in the five-year period.
In the.
This, this is, remind me, June nineteenth was such an often. And, like, the library is closed, there, there really were very few places to go.
Feeling there's like safety.
Yeah, like it could.
We had, we had, we had the Y open.
Um, right, I saw that, but. I don't know, can we open up a town building? Yeah, on a holiday if it was open.
We could, I don't know that we wanted, we may wanna put a pin in that, but the people who found.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we did, we do open. I think more people go to the pool and we've had the pool open now for a number of years and every year people say, be great, it's just like, the tiniest bit of shade.
The pool wells.
No, only the splash cap.
Yeah, but we weren't open for the season yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another. But, yeah.
Yeah, we rose like pools, you bake on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are no, like, change from the couch cushions that we could use for some umbrellas or something. Or reserve fund transfer for some umbrellas for this summer, so that people could actually use this resource that we paid.
Did, you got rid of the sand, right?
Yes, we put side down where there was sand, because the beach was rubbing into the pool.
It is very hard to open the pool with schools, the kids haven't been trained, it's the same kids who come from leave school, but we.
Keep us, keep us one of them. Let's just not close that point yet. So if climate change means increasingly that school ends earlier rather than later. Right, then the question is, how do we think about the target when the pool opens? And how do we facilitate getting enough staff? To open it, I do think that's a legitimate question, double open than having it not open until the end of the month.
I will say, my daughters both life guarded at hail. And they did all their training on weekends in May and June, so that when it opened.
They are. Will be open till. And what if. Have all the work that's done.
Well, anyway, at least for the training, if it's the training issue.
Do, your goal could be perhaps to ask the Park Rec Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, to consider, like, I mean, this.
Right.
That would be.
You wanna add another newbie to your list?
Sure.
I think that would be great, because it's, I mean, it's been a bunch of years now and this is a consistent problem. I mean, couldn't, mostly it's college kids that they're hiring, couldn't they do the hiring and the training at the Y over the winter?
If the perspective is, I actually said to Stacy, why did the pool opening get so good, because it has been so horrible for the past five years? This has been the best it's ever been, in terms of them having enough lifeguards and they're staffed and they're trained and they're there, it's been, it's unbelievable how we got here, so I just. You know, just. It's just, it's perspective.
Well, so if that's difficult, it sounds like it could be, can we also look at. Opening a town building as a cooling station on a holiday.
So we did have, we did have a plan for. Holiday cooling stations, was it just the Y?
It was, so Emergency Management and Health and Human Services put together cooling and heating. Plan when we think it's warranted and our plan has been to utilize the Y when we're closed. I don't think that we believe that there is need beyond that, is how many people show up. Coolant center, including one.
So on June nineteen, I went to the library not knowing this was.
Right.
Many other people, just in the five minutes I was there, showed up to, I think it was gonna be.
To get cool or?
I don't know.
Did we have a sign on it? Okay.
Still.
I think it would be good to have a time.
Including the forest?
Yeah.
It's for what?
Just, just one place where everyone knows they can go.
Well, if the Y is available. Maybe it, you know.
I vote we continue to track usage of cooling centers during this year. While we have heat breaks, like we are now. And let's understand who, how many people are coming in.
Which is good when they're open. If there's a day on a holiday when it's closed.
Well, that's what I'm saying, can we just understand usage even on days that were open, because I don't think we have that data yet.
I'm not sure you know what the library. Why people were there.
Yeah.
We've had, like, heat, we've had shelters in the winter where people would kind of plug their phones in if they didn't have power, like at Rosemary, there you do it fact. Um, it's something we can look at. But I just added to your list, something about talking to Parker Rec about shade and opening the, and the way they're opening. Or to understand it, I mean, I.
To understand the, in the closing, like I just tend to, there's like. Seventy eight, forty eight or something like that, it was a huge staff to manage that many. Guard stations on a rotation, all those days. And then they all go to August, August fifteenth. So it's a huge, it's a big lift.
And the social safety net and food insecurity were both. Put into the bucket.
Direct support through changes.
That happened, we're just at our own.
Okay.
Um, equity and inclusion moment we talked about, so we're kind of turning the equity audit into the. This roadmap. That's where that, it's already on the list. Create an action plan for transitioning all town buildings to having all gender. Wanna talk a little bit about the struggle here?
And. So we. Depending on the town building, some facilities like this one have a single use standalone stall, but a lot of our buildings don't. And so the only option is the traditional binary women's or men's room, um, so. Staff have been talking for a while about. What can we do by each building and. What's a short term step, maybe changing signage versus something else that is a major construction project, um. The state law and code actually speaks to how many bathrooms you need by binary gender, so that's just an. Um, so it's something that we. Staff side have talked about wanting to tackle, needing to tackle for our staff and for residents, um, but we just haven't really made it up right for me, so.
Can I just ask, are we just the, the process that we're going through, are we trying to take these things and put them into these buckets?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just added. From my, from my perspective, this is a priority, but it would be helpful to know before we decide to make recommendations for all town. Buildings if it isn't work, if you want to.
Possible question.
So not just enough question, in a multi-level building. Um, where there are bathrooms on each floor, would you need to change? Like all of the bathrooms in the building, does it need to? Be any particular number, like, could you change? Maybe. Some accessible bathrooms and then not change the rest?
Um, it really is kind of dependent by. It's for that facility and what the set, so it's.
So. If that's the case, I mean, just seems like it's hard to know what the scope of the construction would be without that information.
A plan for each building so that we even know what an option here is a signage, what's enough here is a major construction. You know, it's, it's just a lot of staff time to take into it, and so.
Could, could you start smaller, could you take a building that you may all know, and people don't?
Could we figure it out in town hall and the library and only ask you to do those two this year?
Yeah, we could do like a. Graduated plan.
So the library, um, you can start like here.
Rosemary is the most complicated.
Rosemary is very complicated, um, they only have a single stall down in the pool, and so it's like. An option seasonally upstairs, um, it's just the traditional bathrooms, it's been a challenge for. Uh, people who are sent for. So it's an active thing here about.
So maybe town hall and Rosemary then. I mean, buildings without, buildings that have a single stall aren't. Yeah.
So. All of then my, my suggestion, could we amend the signage for any single stall bathroom to all gender bathrooms? And could we figure out a plan for. The library, town hall and Rosemary.
I'm working at DTH, I don't know why I'm left out.
Um, good point. And the new DPW building would be.
Yeah.
Gender.
Yeah.
Well, I think it would be good to state that.
Do we need to give that as a design?
Great, so are you saying the only major building we've.
Okay, so if we add P S F, we have four buildings.
Right, and then you have Cal, which is, I haven't.
Own priority, this is tricky there.
As you say, from a. Staff resource perspective, I don't know that inventory all town buildings. That you'd need to make a subset of them, we can inventory all of them, and then I think we'd come back and say. Yeah, here's what the options are at each building, and then there really would have to be prioritization then.
Okay.
All right, yeah.
Signage. At any single bathroom. Just to make it an all gender bathroom, so people know that resource is available in their building hardware.
Do we wanna extend this, like, do we, do we wanna specifically say that there should be all gender bathrooms in new construction?
Yeah.
We add that to that goal.
Can be exclusively. In addition to gender.
It would depend on the building. I don't, I don't.
What's the single stall then?
That's what we're talking about, right?
Well.
Those are two different options, yeah.
To have one additional one versus getting rid of your gender. Two different paths.
I know, I feel like, again, this weekend I lived in all gender bathrooms. All weekend homes. Not good, yeah, and it had already been implemented in a building before.
Yeah.
Know what, it was like, ones with stalls and ones with.
There were no. Everything had a closed door.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of the ART, they do that, they have a bathroom that's like, this bathroom has stalls and this bathroom.
And they like to do whatever.
We're building one building and we'll make sure it happens and. Yeah, yeah. The middle school, they already, they already think. They have them.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
This is by, this is heavy lift.
I think inventorying it's not a heavy lift, right?
Okay, just the inventory.
So we're just doing the.
Well, and maybe the statement about the future, right, because. We don't really wanna be building things that we immediately have to.
Yeah.
retrofit.
But again, I think we just gave that direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
For new builds, yeah. The one new build. Until we put the second.
Launching a citizens academy to introduce native residents to all facets of local. For a lot of communities that.
I like it.
And the town, yeah. It seems like an obvious legal women voters thing, again, involved it, but.
And so the, the, um, meaning. Generally, the town runs it and then every, maybe go eight weeks, eight Wednesdays, or then, you know, we would get the fire chief to go and have HHS, it's just.
Yeah.
The town runs it. We can tell them to do it.
The, um. Another thing I don't love about it is the name, Citizens Academy, it seems very like. I don't know, but yours is our five year plan. You know, a civics academy would be. But it's, otherwise seems like a great idea to, uh, we. We grow our own civic minded.
My concern is just that every time I've gone to these. All the usual respects. It seems like a heavy lift for the town. You don't feel it is?
The, the ones that I've seen, they have cohorts of maybe eighteen to twenty people and they fly and they come, so it's not really even.
Oh, so there's a commitment, it's not, it's not like the.
Oh, no, yeah, you sign up, like when you did the, um, the police one, yeah, you sign up and.
I thought you were talking about like the community ed class where.
Yeah. Oh, no, no.
Right? I mean, it's nice.
You and me and like the three other people. Yeah, no, this is a good application and, and so I have colleagues who tell me that people come through and then they're like, how can I get on a board? And so. Which year?
Yeah. Right, go ahead.
Establishment clear guidelines for public art. We actually think this is a priority, um, we started to run into the question of whether it's art or whether it's speech and. We need to get ahead of it.
Kind of similar to the flag.
Yeah. But there are some. People who've done a good job at it in other places and we can, so with like, um. Jury committees and, you know, their. I think this should probably be on your zero to eighteen.
Okay.
So by public art, do you even answer that to the culture fund?
If it's in public art, that's on your property.
Oh.
Yeah, or that you're, that you're, your town property, or that your.
Not.
No, no, no.
No, so, you know, one of the things that we, we built in the square is there's a circle on the sidewalk, they're supposed to have a statue, like the actor go there. That you are required under some strange. Rule to have to do the, the. Murals, the board have a role in approving murals, I didn't really understand why, but. They do, we read it, so. It would be in the, that kind of thing too, something that. Well, um, sometimes people give memorials that are art. We are hanging in the. You put them another one?
Do we actually explain?
Oh, need of community revitalization.
Been a lot of different policies and they don't all make sense anymore, so they come off.
Okay.
So I think both the guidelines and the process should go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seventeen seventy six, somebody raised this, so I put it on here. Do we wanna do something?
I would raise seventeen seventy five.
Seriously, why did you not get the constitution, the independence?
I know, right?
This is where the state is doing something.
Right.
For cities that want to participate and wondering how anyone participates.
Yeah, no, it's great, we should do, I'm not sure why.
You wanna have a committee?
It seems like we need to engage other volunteer organizations to make this on.
Yeah.
Isn't there like a five centennial committee or something?
We go to the history museum or.
Kevin, you could be in charge. You could be at the history.
Is this a refer? Finally get something on the. I'll think of somewhere to send it.
It's coming up quick, though. Actually.
Very quick, yeah.
Actually, we don't want. This is really coming.
To someone else.
We could refer to his door for now.
Oh, okay, not to far, we far.
Re-refer.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I agree.
Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy movie, the door signs.
Okay, the next one is mine, I'm just gonna keep saying it, if someone says, great idea. It's, it's so much fun, we never had, or at least not.
Porch fest, right?
Uh, no, we've never had a, like a celebration to open our town hall. And this is something that happens in Cambridge and it's a super fun and very low maintenance event. Which is, that's odd. You get lights all crazy all over the buildings, like strobe, you know, laser lights, whatever, and there's like. Super loud music for a short time. And people come and they dance and, you know, the restaurants should. Do food on the sidewalks and that's it, that's the whole thing, it's like. People have picnics on the common and people dance. Hasn't, no one done this in Cambridge? Where is it? The most fabulous. Where do they do it? In front of the town hall. And it's fantastic, and it's just, it's just like a very. Very. Not infrastructure intensive event, so I just. Not infrastructure intensive event, so I just thought it'd be fun as, um. Maybe something to kick off the fall, I mean, our fall is gonna be super serious, there's like crazy presidential. Politics and. There's all kinds of stuff, we, I feel like we should celebrate. The common and. I don't know, it just seems like a fun thing to do. All of our events are meaningful and. Fun is.
The video of the Barbie movie, that's what Cambridge did, right, what they're doing, right? Cambridge theme was the Barbie theme.
I don't know, I didn't attend this year because I was. But in the past, it's just, it's just like. You know. That's the problem, we shouldn't hold a party.
I think this is actually a very interesting idea, but. But what would it take to do it like quickly in the fall? That's what I'm kind of rolling in my head.
I don't know.
I think the only infrastructure I think is trash, people will be tons of traction.
Yeah. And, and some lights, like which I'm sure we could rent and maybe put down with long last there. And they do for every other. Event. And. It is just something that, you know, people could like, it would be appropriate, you know. In the, in the evening for kids. So families could come.
What time?
I don't know, like. Whenever, six to eight, six to nine, something like.
Thursday.
Friday or Saturday, is it because, because the music is loud, so you don't wanna be a Saturday? Cause you don't wanna, you know, prevent people.
Saturday.
What's the one after? Hard not to feel like if it was pressing it.
You judge.
So September seventh?
That'd be sad, yeah.
Not really a fall kickback if it's that early.
So we'll come back to that.
Yeah, it's like kind of.
They're really into school, so it's not. It's not. Well, started, but they won't really be doing.
They're keeping that briefs?
Yes.
Okay. You can put it on zero. But if we don't hire someone to replace Emily, uh, we may have to.
To get the meeting business association.
Yeah, yeah, completely.
Chamber, we had to take the events back in the chambers.
Oh, they didn't take them over?
We had to take the.
September thirty. It's usually around that first week in October, but that's Russian.
They're all weekends. Okay, um, gather economically vital, gather community data from, um, Pacer AI, you can talk about this one?
Sure, and. JP had been looking at, um. A need in economic development of wanting better data about where people going in town, where are they coming from, where are they going to? And, um, this originally came up as potentially a use for ARCA dollars, uh, but we wanted to bring it, um. To you because there's really a policy question here, so, um, place or AI is a company that collects. Um, that provides back aggregate data to communities that is collected from cellphone. Um. GPS, so I don't know, I don't believe that place or AI is doing the collecting, but that collecting is happening and place or AI. Aggregates it and gives it back to communities, um. So you could see what the various uses, just to. Make it more clear, you know, you could see who went to a restaurant, did they come from in town or out of town? Did they shop at the CBS beforehand, or were they coming from the Fazio? But you could see that kind of, um, information, so communities have used it. For economic development purposes to say, hey, we're gonna have great foot traffic in this area. And if somebody just wants to locate, um, you have some data to back up. Um. Why it would be valuable location, um, we also could use it for parking lots to understand. Um, how long somebody was staying, um, in a place that won't have the meter app. So we won't get data from the app that way, so it's like in the chapel street lot. Um, you could get a sense of how long they're there, um. So. The level of detail that we get back is not individualized, it wouldn't say Katie King or her self, the cell phone number was here, here, here. But it does give you a lot of information democratically about who's coming and going, so it'll say. You know, there were two hundred people and this was the median income and this is the race and this is age profile. Um, so it raised kind of a question, which drives on this list, um. Is the board comfortable with us using public funds to contract with that? Vendor to get that information. From a, um. Operational perspective. JP does not explicitly want to use it ongoing, it's a software service, and so you, if you purchase it for like a year subscription. Um, he just wants it for one year to see the data that we get. Find if it's actionable and likely that would be the end, um, not like it's going faster. Um, but I think there's really a question of, um. Is this the use of public funds that you're comfortable?
I think the data. Like it's, it's a little creepy, um, but, but also aside from that, you don't know. When there's a need of residence. So. I, I think you know, part of our policies created for needed residents. If you start relying on that data and it's. Being skewed. By non-residents, then it's not so valuable.
Well, do we know, you, you, you just said that, that you would be able to see who was coming from us, so do we know who's?
I think we, I think.
identifies if you were already in Needham or going to outside Needham. As opposed to coming and going outside of town. And.
But you don't. Like a medium resident could be coming from out of town.
Yeah.
Like I still don't think you can tell where they live.
But from the standpoint of business development, if we're trying to encourage businesses to come. They don't care, it's just, it's just hey, there's, as, as, as you're saying, there's foot traffic on the street. You know, this is a good place. To bring your business or for the parking, so I think for those uses that, that you're outlining, it may not matter that much. You know, where do we want to have parking? More or less, how can we, how can we encourage businesses to come here? It seems, I mean, I guess my feeling is this data is being collected all the time anyway, yes, it's super creepy, but we're all, you know, unless we all locked out of. Everything and, you know, it is being collected, so this isn't. Creating a privacy issue, I don't believe, because the data is hard, yeah.
So if they're not the ones collecting the data, then it's even one step removed. Like, the data exists, this company is making it available to us, but they're not going to be collecting it, so. The creepiness levels.
Yeah, that happens all over this place too.
Yeah, 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 no, I mean, it, it's out there.
So this is discussed, to discuss, we'll discuss. We're not deciding.
No, no, we're doing.
Do we know what the cost is?
Um. Twenty thousand?
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty and thousand for the year.
So if the town.
And, and we would expect. It would be helpful to know what we would expect for how it comes. For that twenty K, what we should expect.
Yeah, like, do we have to mine it or do they provide?
Well, the AI, I'm presuming that. Some kind of reporting that's.
They're going, the, the app. The subscription is, it's. Tracking, uh, phones. And it's showing for the locations that are identified, let's say.
And everybody's de-identified, all gets.
Yes, uh, let's say it's the Chestnut Street block, they're letting you know where, where that, uh. Where the individual came, to the point, you don't know if it's a Needham resident, that was a Newton and came and then stopped just, uh. Chapel Street parking lot, and then went home. Or, uh, or an out of towner who happens to be working in need for the day. Chapel Street watch, it's just showing you where the trap, basically traffic patterns are going for select geographical. Yeah, areas in town, uh, you know, Outfield Memorial Park. And the, uh, the major parking centers. Get a sense is, like, are people coming from Eden Crossing downtown to go to lunch? Are they staying in Needham? So that's the sort of data it's, it's going to provide. And, and, um, in numbers, that's not done, but to Katie's point, there's nothing to say. It's data, data, it's just, I mean, it's kicking, it's kicking, it's happening.
But is it, two questions, is it a portal, like, can, can? Anyone access the data directly or do you?
No, you have to subscribe, so I'm presuming we would get a.
It would be our economic manager that would have access to the subscription. And the data and then of course would. Provide reports and such.
But like, okay, so, but what if any, if there's a public records request, can someone access that?
No, because technically it's not town property, it's the entity. That's the subscription, that's been covered, um. I'm now going back a number of years, when the banks were all failing. The state treasurer's office said, oh, go to your local town hall, they have subscriptions, um, the safety of the different banks. And the banks and the subscription services quickly counted on. This is proprietary information and it's, and it's a subscription service in the town, it's not ownership. And it can't be shared, and the same thing with this, that would have to broke tire. It would be proprietary, so. Everybody wouldn't have the right to. Well, the, the, the final report would be. But actually being able to use the data and. I, I mean, let's say. I, I, I want this, not in my capacity as an employee, but. In the capacity of citizen, oh, I, I wouldn't see that data that would not. I would expect there to be appropriation, I bet, when costs would be substantially lower. Yeah.
So what are we gonna use this data for?
I mean, primarily for that, um, development, um. To understand where are people coming and going for what purpose? And, and then what opportunities does that provide, if you have a storefront, if you have. A business that calls and is thinking about relocating here, um, you know, right now, we. We don't have much data, we, you know, they get worse than. Putting us up. Yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
Which are businesses, so this is to be provided to private companies?
Not the, I don't expect producing a report and giving it to them, but so that JP can. Understand what is happening in town, where are there opportunities, where can he?
He can sell Needham to a business. Come here, you're gonna make money. You know?
Right.
Do our peer, but if there's other. If there's other opportunities for us to get an understanding about town assets through this, we need to. So we wanted to know, how many people are running the baby Saturday?
How many will go to the dump? It was.
Yeah. Be able to differentiate between autos, bikers and walkers.
It's so.
So slow, so. I.
I think this actually would be tremendously valuable in tracking that, because there's some ethical reason why, I think it's right. Those are constant issues with data, what people have granted rights to, or not granted rights to, but I think it would be tremendously valuable.
Yeah.
Or relatively short balance.
I guess I haven't seen with it exactly, but I, I can imagine that this didn't, could be misinterpreted very easily, but you don't know. You, you could spin whatever story. Because. For instance, you, you're going to see more traffic in private areas. I mean. For business purposes, you're going to see more traffic to existing business areas, there's a question, you know, about building a business. You know, where they're not currently businesses, maybe someone wants, you know, change zone, there, there's a proposal right now of. You know, having more. Change the zoning. Up to a lot for the business, that's not gonna. Really help with that. Um, I don't think it is, I, I feel like it just. What does it tell us that we don't? That we can't measure?
Actually, it can be weird, but. I started this for COVID. Spread COVID on like, uh, you know. A super spreader in back in Florida, to, to track cell phones all the way to, you know, going back to home Chicago. They could see COVID.
In particular, I mean, we're doing, we're about to launch a study. For the RTS and RTS use. But one of the things that we know is that we can never get our surveys out ever. Right, so. Strikes me that we would actually get a much. Accurate count, who's actually using the dump. Sorry, the RTS.
Right.
I mean, in conjunction with, not as a replacement for, but just in conjunction with, because I, I feel like it's hard to get. Participation in certain.
I could learn something about who comes for restaurants.
Between residents and non-residents.
Residents shouldn't be going to there. Okay, so there are gonna be some. I mean, yeah, there, there will be some. Yeah, let's see if we can get a lot of information.
Here, here's a thought, um, in terms of the business development, I don't know how many of our peer communities use this service. But if I were a business and I'm running a business and I was saying, wow. Should I go to Needham, should I go to Wellesley, should I go to Waltham and. Waltham and Wellesley can show me what my actual traffic is gonna be in the area and Needham can't. That might put us at a disadvantage.
I think you would see, right, you would see people, feelings feel going to Abbot's after a game type of thing. It would show, it would show customer front. I agree with Barry and in jobs, there's this big thing about too much data and the whole thing is. Ethically really edgy, but on this, it's like, it's all out there. I think it's. But I don't want that more of a gear. It can tell us things like the memorial day soccer. When all the people come here, do it and stay and go. And go to a restaurant after, so is there economic advantage of hosting those type of events in Needham? That there is actually some economic benefit to the community as well. Minusure, where data could be useful, that I can't think of a way that we could get that otherwise. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, there's the KGB, you know, that has five statistics, uh, people, yeah, we have cell phones and.
When people complain, well, that's all you, to answer that.
I know, no, I, I'm with you, it's like, you know, I mean, there's a certain libertarian issue on like, this is my data, it's not your. You, the life you live is, you know, you are. There's a problem.
Well, I think everybody else has, like, so all the other people that choose to buy the data will have it and we wouldn't have, the data is out. And people are buying it for all kinds of reasons that we might like, that we might not like, and we would be choosing to blind ourselves. To that data.
Well, that's what everyone else has. It's an experiment to see whether it's worth it, I mean.
I have a problem with the credit card. Like tracking credit card purchases. Yeah, I mean, well, yeah, but like.
I don't, we're not gonna track that, I don't think.
I, I'm like. Card and not shit data that's proprietary to them. But, I mean. Yes, but I mean.
I think I'm hearing comparable for one year.
Yes.
Uncomfortable for a year, I'll see what it does.
Yeah, I don't think it.
So do you have?
Either vote?
Vote?
No.
So.
I mean.
I would love to see if there's a marketing piece on it, exactly what we would.
Yes.
Um, yeah, and afterwards can be told in. Like to avoid putting.
Yeah, oh yeah, probably more than once. I'm hoping it'll help inform our economy development plan.
Yeah.
Um, it being said, forty, do you want to tackle livable or?
Um.
Yeah.
Do you want, or do you want to?
Nobody's here yet.
Okay.
I was saying, I I don't know if it was in the room, but we can finish these on the thirty. That's helpful. Um. Yeah, so we had wondered whether the board wanted to have an actual production goal for affordable housing, separate from the zoning for affordable housing.
It's way separate from the zone.
Separate from the zone that we're the M B T A communities, we run a separate production, which we haven't.
I feel like this is attached to the trust.
So we did, so we should do that first and then if this comes after. See how we can set a really, any kind of connected to reality goal.
You don't make, yeah, you don't make a goal then, then the result is you will fail to meet it. Um, I also felt that when I read this, that with home, we would always tell people, we're just doing something, we're not doing production. So I was reading this like. We're pushing production, this, we were just, it's it felt like we told many people in all the meetings that we just doing something. Uh, but you're right, this is the Affordable Housing Trust.
I think I I like that idea. I'm not sure the Affordable Housing Trust is the vehicle to oversee all housing production in the town, but I think. It would be part of that conversation to say, who's gonna do it?
Yeah, and and also, I mean, it could maybe set a goal with a better understanding of what's even involved. But I think for us to set a goal would be really arbitrary without.
I think a lot of it's been done in the housing plan.
Well, I just said, that housing plan has like many strategies that M B T A committees, and zoning was one, there's that forecast and that's another. Having a, for people with enough, so it's just a consideration of all. That makes sense, we're putting in thirty six plus.
Um, we're putting it with the housing trust. Where was that?
Oh, with.
Well, I'll put it under their, under their, like their charge maybe, or to consider, because the housing trust is consider what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where, where are they? Okay. I'm encouraging participants in the planning boards large house review.
Yes.
Zero to eighteen.
Yes. Um. Uh, based on the comments at town meeting, I think if there's not something that comes before town meeting in May, like. People are ready to go. Basically, if the same thing came to town meeting, the same citizen petition, I feel like town meeting. So I think it has to be faster than than even a year.
There is, uh, uh, I'm not gonna comment on that. I'm only gonna comment that I don't think it's possible to get to May. Because the way zoning, they're gonna create a committee and you're gonna um write zoning and have a hearing, you have to have the zoning done by January one to there.
I think they're starting the committee essentially in August, right? That's what I was given.
I I'm sure it won't be until September.
I mean, there'll be an inter.
Urgency, I just, I'm I'm always, the timeline is so crazy.
Like, this is one of the big trees. I hear about trees, I hear about stormwater, I hear about large house.
And they're all connected, right? Big houses push out the change, so. Um, Stephen Power transition plan, we already, um, we put that at the other role, so I'll words with that. Leaf blowers.
I would love to see us do something on leaf blowers. Yes, we could refer to someone else. I would just like to see it happen.
They said it basically, yes, do it, but um. You know, if there was one company in one location that made the amount of noise leave work was made, we would have solved the problem. It happens though, as many companies in the same place keep moving around, creating the same effect in all the neighborhoods. I still think we have to fix.
It's a menace.
I'm trying to think.
Too, these two stroke engines, I mean, I'm more.
They did. I always thought that, because California banned the two-stroke, two-stroke. That that would change the industry. It hasn't happened yet.
But there are accounts.
Yeah, that, yes, and it's, I think it's unsatisfying, right? It's hard to enforce.
I have a study group.
So you've said a good, no.
I mean, I, yeah, because this isn't a big issue for you or no, because you think it's impossible? I think we haven't looked at all the places where we're gonna have to allocate people to committees yet. So I think we need to make a list again of what are all the new committees and then decide what, where this runs, on the things that need to happen.
You can make it just a little bit more general, so our noise bylaws is so minimal, like, the only thing in our noise bylaw is no construction before or after certain hours. This could go in a noise bylaw. And, you know, not talk specifically about blowers, but I think it would cover.
To restrict the hours or to restrict the decibels?
One of those. I mean, probably.
Oh, but those are brilliant. Yeah.
Yeah, now they could do electric ones, but they're not quite up to snuff, right?
No, they totally are. And there's rebates, yeah.
But then, which they don't work for commercial vendors.
No, no, they have commercial size and they have commercial rebates.
Yes, but then they run out of charge, and so they either have to buy like a million, a million of them, because they run out of charge. And they need to downtime recharge them before they can go back down to service for customers. So it gets to be tricky for the commercial guys, is what we understand.
I think this has been solved, but I mean, I I know that there are lots and lots of places that do this and there are lots of companies that do this. I mean, it may not, it it may indeed not work. I don't think that the answer is to say no. Or electric doesn't work. I think we have to find that there. Um, I I was actually wondering if we could refer it to. Needham or someone to bring us some options.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like come to, because they've been looking into it. So if they come to this left word and they won't be.
If we refer it to them, then it it gives them more hope.
If we know that's our organization, can we do them?
No, we can ask.
I think what Kathy's saying is that that may give them hope that we might do something.
Right, because I mean, well, you know, like for them, they, everybody has limited time, right? So if it's something that. The select board is like, hmm, we like the idea of a leaf blower restriction, it might be encouraging to them. To spend their.
Yeah, I guess we can't, as long as we feel that way, that we're gonna. Kind of send them to the polls there.
True.
Because otherwise they should just do that citizen petition, right?
But you think that, like, the electric first gas is better than the noise?
No, I don't think, I think it's, I think that it hasn't been found legal to mandate a switch from gas to electric. I think that the towns and and states even that have been successful have done it on noise decibel.
Yeah.
That that might not be true anymore. I mean, I don't know, but that's, I mean, like DC, I think just did it, but they did it based on. The fact that it creates so much noise that it's actually dangerous. I thought some of our Massachusetts cities and towns actually banned, uh, mandated. Yeah, I I don't know, that's what I'm saying. Like, I don't think we know enough to.
There were rollouts, there were, um, I think they tried to ban it in, you know, certain seasons. You couldn't do it during the summer when winds were open, but you could use it for leaf season. To be here the most, um, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think the various towns have done different things, but I guess that's my point, it's like. We don't know now. So if there are folks, and I know that there are angry media, with the intent that's gonna pass them, present their findings to us. And then we can, with that information, decide if we want to go on or how we want to. I think the question is, does the board want them to do this legwork because you support it? Because, I mean, they should know that. Right? With their constituency on the board, that might support it.
Support it.
That's fine. You know, likely this thing, rename or doesn't, you get very, and they bring it to me in the citizen's petition. You get a very pure thing like, this is what we need to work, this is up and down.
Not that they want to. They don't go to citizen's petition intentionally, they are always asking to do.
Yeah, but if we do it, we take in all the stakeholders, we get a smaller more, uh, the mean will create something different. Won't be as. Thank you. Sure.
No, I had a discussion with Beck about this, because she had been in a group that had looked at it at the state level, trying to solve it there. And the answer is this fell into the bucket of, she calls Tina problems. Tina is there is no alternative. So there are apparently aspects of this that are not. Currently with current technology solvable. Now, will they be solvable a year from now or two years from now? People think within a year or two they are, but not.
Well, yeah, I would, I would argue too, though, that just like. Plastic bag, bag band, the plastic bands, the bottle bands, like, as long as we, uh, implementation date out a little ways. Provides incentive for there to be an alternative. And if we don't start, we won't. Forget it. Yeah. If if they're true, if we were to implement it. Uh, while that is is truly unimplementable, then we would have to deal with that, but I don't. That's. Or, okay.
All right.
Last one, make it count.
The last one?
Like, it isn't the last one, I.
There'll be.
Yeah, they are, yeah, okay, sixty one more.
All right. Sporing Amy Hamlock towards to the Hoardings Grant.
Last year and they told you to find a constituency.
Yeah, the Memorial Group in, uh, the U Church is looking into exploring meaningful slavery and Native American land taking. Um, the Hoardings Grant was the last parcel that William the Hoardings actually granchised himself. When he divided up Dedham. I think it hacks sovereignty, which is like a big boo-boo. Um, so that's just his sort of. And, but, um, it would be, it's held by the D C R, is, does a town want to ask D C R to consider renaming?
So this would involve somebody to do some research and us to write a letter?
Yeah, I think Needham history would probably do the research.
We're writing letters, yeah.
Doesn't sound that hard.
Needham History Desk, if they could write us a letter.
I mean, uh, if you want to put it on zero to eighteen, I'm happy to ask them to help.
Sure, is that, Bert?
Is Hemlock, personally, was this named after?
Is, no, Hemlock is a. Yeah.
Good question.
His last name is the George, the gorge. So that's it.
So one other question I asked at some point this year that I realized wasn't here, and I don't know whether this is the right place. I had to ask if it was possible, that somebody builds a new home. To require that they also construct a sidewalk to our standards in front of that. If this might be a way for us to get side.
I can ask Harris.
Sure.
It just seems to me that if, because they don't be buying one of these devices, they probably.
Can I add to that?
I I don't know if you can have piecemeal like sidewalks, like, you know.
Back back to a code.
Well, to a code.
Well, right, but the, a lot of times we move the gutter line.
Under your house, the next house, no, the next one.
Especially if the if the line is, right, let me ask. It did have that.
In the same logic, could we have some different?
We're, we've got a tree, we've got a tree.
I know, all right, I got you. All right. Uh, we're gonna adjourn, uh, would anyone want to make a motion?
I'm going to adjourn second.
All right, so all those who want to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, we're adjourned.